The total project includes 12 parcels, which comprises approximately 306 acres. This project area includes lands that are not subject to the approved tentative map nor planned for development at this time. The entirety of the project area is circled here and identified in yellow. The project site is southeast of the intersection of Eight Mile Road and Lower Sacramento Road, and includes the rights-of-way of Marlette and Eight Mile Roads. There are nine vacant parcels that are intended for the physical development of the LaBarren Ranch project. The project includes a general plan amendment of the land use map to change the current land use designations of the project site to allow the proposed project development. It also provides a designation of land uses on the remaining project area, although not proposed for development. So as you can see here, surrounding areas include low-density residential, commercial, high-density residential, and then within the project area, we have low-density residential in the light yellow, the medium-density in the tan, high-density in the brown, and the parks and open space in the dark green, and institutional in the lighter green. There is, the general plan amendment would help reconfigure these uses in order to match the project development plan. The subject site is technically outside of the city limits, so it does not have city zoning. However, zoning designations for properties nearby include commercial, higher-density residential, and low-density residential. The overall project proposes to subdivide nine of the 12 parcels into 1,411 units, as well as common area lots for parks, open space areas, a stormwater basin, and a series of connected wellness walks throughout the subdivision. LaBarren Ranch will consist of one high-density residential site that has 194 units, plus four different residential lot sizes for the single-family products that will provide some variation in home sites. The project will install on- and off-site improvements, including public streets, sidewalks, curbs, gutter, landscaping, street lighting. All required utilities will be extended to the project site from the existing utility network and will comply with city standards. LaBarren Ranch will have the high-density residential there to the east. The four different residential lot configurations include 50 by 100 feet, 60 by 100 feet, 45 by 75 feet, and 50 by 80-foot lots. Each single-family unit will have a two-car garage, meeting code requirements, and parking for the high-density residential will also meet code requirements.
Yes, Councilwoman Padilla has a question?
Sure.
Oh, thank you. Looking at the map, the zoning map, could you tell me, is McNair High School within that area?
McNair High School within this project area? Not that I'm aware of, no.
It's south of Marlette Road. Okay, I just wanted to, I wasn't sure if that went all the way through. And then where are the interests, the exits?
Sure. So if we look at, oh, sorry, wrong way. There are a number of access points. There will not be access from Eight Mile Road, and I was going to touch on that in a later slide. There will be access on West Lane, one, two, a minimum of, I believe, two access points from Marlette, and then access from, future access to Lower Sacramento Road.
Okay, thank you.
And before we continue, do any council members need to disclose anything regarding this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I met with the developers.
Yeah, I need to disclose I met with the developers as well.
I met them as well.
I met with them as well.
Okay?
Okay.
Let's see.
I did as well.
I'll just say yes to be safe.
Continuing on, the West Lane access will be aligned with a future connection to the Trevigny project, which is located east of this, I'm sorry, yeah, east of the project. On June 26th of this year, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the project requests for a vesting tentative map, planned development, waiver, and recommendation to the council for EIR certification, and approval of a general plan amendment, and pre-zoning of the site. After hearing public testimony from the applicant, the Planning Commission voted 5-0, with the chair absent, to approve the tentative map, the planned development, and the waiver. Those resolutions are attached in the staff report. They also approved a recommendation to the city council to certify the environmental impact report and associated documents, approved the general plan amendment, and the pre-zoning and application for annexation. No members of the public spoke during that public, I'm sorry, during that Planning Commission public hearing. To summarize, the vesting tentative map was for LaBarren Ranch, which had the utilization of nine of 12 parcels. The approved planned development allowed the development to have some standards from typical standard, deviation standards, such as increased lot coverages, reduced setbacks, and reduced lot widths. That provides some more flexibility in the creation of housing. They also received a waiver for the reduction of open space by about 8%. The project is now before the city council for consideration of the requested certification of the EIR, as well as approval of the city services plan, general plan amendment, and pre-zoning, and application for annexation. Regarding said annexation, a public comment was received from a property owner that is within the project boundary, which is actually, I don't know if you can see my pointer, this little piece right there. They wish to remain in unincorporated San Joaquin County. The council does have the authority in terms of their application to Lafco of whether or not you want to include that. I will say, however, that Lafco does have the ultimate authority to determine boundaries and how they deem it as whether or not it's orderly development, which is a finding in the Cortez-Z Knox Act. So I just wanted to put that out there for your knowledge. The open space areas are dispersed throughout the site, as seen here, identified in green. As mentioned previously, they are proposing about 28 acres of open space. 12.2 acres would be public parks, 8.47 would be wellness walks along prominent streets, and 7.5 acres of open space for, and basin to manage stormwater, and a landscaped buffer along Eight Mile Road. There is also a planned 12-acre set-aside for the Lodi Unified School District to develop a future K-8 site, and the past map showed that better, right there. Given that the project site is presently located within an unincorporated area of the county, annexation is requested. The annexation must be preceded by pre-zoning through a zoning map amendment. The project, therefore, does include said request to pre-zone. That would be pre-zoning to RL, RM, RH, and PF zoning designations, which is low residential, low, medium, and high residential densities, as well as public facilities. The proposed pre-zoning of land uses are compatible with the general plan amendments that the applicant is requesting, so everything will match. Only upon approval of the annexation by Lafco would the zoning take effect. So if the project, yes?
No, no, because I was going to get to the, hoping that you would say then, we, if we have updated our tax-sharing agreement, would we then be able to, they would fall within that new agreement?
Yes, so this is not annexed in the city, so it cannot go to Lafco until a tax-sharing agreement is in place, whether the master or a one-off.
Wonderful, thank you.
A project environmental impact report, I will future, just say EIR for ease, has been prepared and evaluated the potential development of LaBarren Ranch, as well as potential development of the remainder of the project site. The EIR is intended by SEQA to be an informational document for the public and decision-makers. Decision-making in relation to the environmental impacts is reserved for the lead agency and any responsible parties. Consequently, information in the EIR does not limit your ultimate discretion, but you must address each significant effect identified in the EIR and findings. The draft EIR identified potentially significant effects under several topic areas, which are listed in the staff report. A notice of preparation for the EIR was distributed to the public for its required 30-day period. That was in July through August of '23. That concluded with a public scoping meeting on August 22nd, 2023, of which no members of the public attended. Eight public comment letters were received during that NOP process. The city prepared the draft EIR and circulated that for the required 45-day review. That was from August 16th, '24 to September 30th, '24. The city received six comment letters from interested parties. The final EIR includes a mitigation monitoring and reporting program to ensure that mitigation monitoring and project revisions in the EIR are implemented. The measures are described, and revisions described in the EIR are fully enforceable through permit conditions and other measures that we have available. That is contained in a separate document that accompanies the final EIR, of which is in your exhibits. A statement of overriding consideration was also prepared for this project, as it does involve one or more significant effects that cannot be reduced to less-than-significant level even with mitigations. That will be explained at the next slide. Because of these significant and unavoidable impacts that can't be mitigated through mitigation measures, a statement of overriding considerations is required under SEQA law. The statement must be adopted by the city council in acknowledgement that even though the project has significant and unavoidable impacts, that the anticipated benefits of the project, whether economic, social, et cetera, warrant said approval. The significant and unavoidable impacts identified in the statement of overriding considerations relate to aesthetics and visual resources, agricultural resources, air quality, and transportation and circulation. The SOC concluded that the land uses are intended to generate jobs and tax revenue for the city while providing recreational facilities, a possible school site, and housing opportunities. It would provide construction job growth and potential school-related job growth to the area. It would provide nearby housing opportunities for current and future residents. It would increase the city's housing supply in the northern portion of the city, which could spur development, economic growth, and tax generation in that area. And it would generate tax revenue that the city would not otherwise benefit from if the project were not to develop. The subject development will also further a number of general plan policies, including orderly well-planned development, neighborhood access to well-maintained public facilities, the provision of a variety of housing types, the encouragement of a variety, and the encouragement of a variety of housing types. All affirmative findings as required by the code can be met for this project. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council adopt three resolutions and one ordinance. I do want to clarify a formatting error regarding the pre-zoning action. This was drafted in the Planning Commission format, that was just a typo. We cleared it with the city attorney's office. The ordinance is attached in the staff report. It was noticed properly, so it's just a matter of amending the motion. So staff recommends, if the council is supportive of the project, a resolution to certify the EIR, a resolution to approve the general plan land use amendment, an ordinance for the pre-zoning, and then a resolution authorizing the filing of the annexation application to Lafco. I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also present.
Are there any questions for Ms. Acasio? Any questions for the applicant? I would like to bring it back, and I don't know if the applicant, what they're putting forward, but Councilwoman Padilla brought up about, you know, access points, roads, things like that. And we already know how brutal it is to get through Lower Sacramento Road, Eight Mile Road, West Lane, you know, Davis, that whole corridor. And it should be widening. Will it be widened before the actual homes are built? I don't know. Trevor?
Yep, I'm going to let him speak to that.
So to answer your question, Trevor Smith with TS Planning and Development here in Stockton. The project's going to be phased from West Lane and Marlette to the west. So we're going to stay away from Lower SAC until about Phase Four of the project, and that's more than halfway into it. Then we'll have to punch out to Lower SAC and finish that intersection.
And Marlette, will you be doing some improvement?
And Marlette will be built out.
Through Lower Sacramento Road?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, with Phase Four.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. We have comments from the public?
Steve Miller?
Can, could I go first, and then Steve follow me?
That's fine.
My card's in there. I've been waiting 20 years to be able to talk about this area.
Go ahead, Trevor.
And see something happen out there. So you know who I am. I was able to introduce the LaBarren family to, and that includes Wayne LaBarren, Bill and Richard LaBarren, to Steve Miller. Steve brings years of master, residential master planning of projects with a significant private home builder, now on his own. And again, we teamed up with the landowner, and this is a cooperative effort. A big thanks to the staff for all the hard work and the years of processing this. Couple things, I usually just rely on their staff report. Two things I just want to mention that I didn't hear. When we analyzed the project, we looked at a with-school and without-school scenario in the EIR. We've been talking to the Lodi Unified School District. They are interested in our site. They're interested in the Trevigny, which is an approved project already in the city to our east. But what those conversations spurred on their end was long-term planning. So they're looking at, they own a piece of, they own a parcel in this general area, not in our project, but just to our south. They're re-looking at the whole planning effort out there, is my understanding. So we've set it up to give them a site, to bring them into the project if they want to be there. The last thing I'll mention, I think it's important, neighborhood meetings. We had a neighborhood meeting well in advance of the Planning Commission. We sent all the invites out. We got a church and 15 church members to come. So the church on Lower SAC, they're very interested in the project, they're supportive of the project, they're going to be annexed with the project along with the other properties in the northwest corner. So just quickly, just four points I'd like to make. The size of the project, and the multiple designations of low, medium, and high, gave us a canvas to, for a true community to be dreamed up. The variety of lot sizes found in the general plan will allow for a mixture of home product types that you heard, that will touch on what we, Steve and I, like to call the full lifecycle of ownership. First-time home buyers, move-up buyers, aging-in-place buyers. The general plan amendment that we're asking doesn't take anything away, it just reshuffled the deck and blended them. So instead of putting low-density or medium-density over here, and all low-density here, we brought them together and blended them. The central three, the Central Park provides a hub for new residents to gather. And I did provide Nicole with an image of the park. Did those get included? I'm 30, 20 seconds.
Yeah, so that's your time's up for that.
Okay.
For doing public comment. But you can speak as the applicant.
Okay.
For it.
Okay.
Because you are the applicant.
So the park provides a hub for the residents through what we call, I mentioned, let me get back on track here. Wellness walks throughout the project can lead the project, leads, and leads people to the park and the school site should Lodi take it up. Fourth and final, the enhanced walkways, it's wider sidewalk areas, more landscaping. They're going to draw people to them. You'll have your walkers, your joggers, the kids going to the park, the kids going to the school site on a space that's farther away from the traffic. So in conclusion, the area's been identified in the general plans, plural, for 30 years for development. A few years back, Trevigny got approved. We look forward to continuing the effort to bring more housing into Stockton, and an area that has long planned for it to happen. Thank you.
Steve, Steve Miller?
Steve Miller, the applicant here for LaBarren Ranch, and I just want to briefly address the kind of the concept that Trevor alluded to, which was the full lifecycle of housing. And we're excited to bring this to Stockton, because it's rare that you see a development with the diversity of product type that we're bringing forward. And the concept here is twofold. The first is the, our effort to expand the attainability of housing to as many people as possible, and probably further than what other projects do when they only have a single product type. And the other is the diversity of product for different times of your life and different housing needs. But let me just quickly go back to what I think is the most important part, and that's to expand the attainability of new housing in Stockton. You know, with, the way we achieve this is by having a diverse set of lots. And so standard is to have a standard, like, single lot size of maybe 5,000 or 6,000 square feet. And when the builder may give some thought about, hey, how am I going to reach a more affordable price point, what do they do? They don't have many options. They have one single lot size, and then they may just take, build a smaller house on a larger lot. So to take that, to expand that in terms of trying to reach affordability, not only with these smaller lots, we have more flexibility to bring down costs by putting logically a smaller house on a smaller lot. And then we can take another step forward with that affordability. And by doing that, we hope to expand the ability for more people to participate in home buying in Stockton. It's not foolproof, but it is an effort and something that's, you know, we've given some thought to. And quite frankly, we have no choice, because we're at a kind of affordability crisis right now. And I'm not telling any of you anything you don't know, but the cost of land is insane. And so it would, to me, in the way we design master-planned communities, it would be foolish not to be thoughtful about, of trying to offer a variety of lot sizes and product types to enhance affordability through our design. Lastly, the other thing that we're excited about this project is the, is the diversity of products. Like Trevor mentioned, it's, you know, for first-time home buyers, move-up buyers, people who may have to downsize because of changing circumstances in their lives, right? You know, kids move out, divorce, or what have you. But, you know, having a diversity of product in one place allows people to stay within the community. And I, does that mean?
He, he, yeah, he's part of the applicant.
I'll make this brief. But I'm sure many of you know people who have had to either downsize, or their housing needs have changed, and they have, when they go to look for housing, they have to leave their neighborhood. Neighborhoods are people's bonds and their connection to their community and the connection to the city. So we think by offering this diversity of product, we allow people to stay rooted within their community and build stronger bonds. And thank you very much for this opportunity tonight. And there's more I'm excited about, but my two minutes are up. Thanks.
Just bring us for when you break ground.
All right.
Hi there. I'm Gary Greeno, the pastor of the church, that's right in the middle of this area. And we have 17 acres, and we are really excited about this. The neighborhood is going to be really cool. I mean, you heard about and saw the pictures of the houses, the walkways, the park, the potential school, and then now you've got a church right there as well. And we've been there for about 20 years, and we've met, many of our leaders have met. Trevor and the team came, did the neighborhood meeting at our church, and we're really excited about it. We just think it'd be a great addition to Stockton. I personally have been in Stockton for over 20 years, and just think that area is just ready to be developed. You mentioned the traffic. If you're going down Lower Sacramento Road, at certain times, it is crazy. But I think having Marlette go all the way through, the other access points into the neighborhood, I think are going to be, keep the traffic flowing really, really good. And so our church is really excited. So we're definitely in favor for it.
Pat Barrett?
Pat Barrett, resident. I didn't hear anything about solar. I'm hoping you're including solar. Okay. Oh, good, oh, good. Okay, so I'm the stickler on the low-income housing. I don't know if you've talked to Visionary or Housing Authority to see what the market is for people that are low-income to buy into the program that they offer. And I say that because we're supposed to have 20% of all housing dedicated to low-income. When I was at the Planning Commission, one of the remarks was, we can't make the developer do the 20% low-income. And one of the remarks was, the developer sits there and says, okay, we did all these houses, now we're left with our 20%, but guess what? We can't afford the materials for it. So it's left to not do the 20%. City of Stockton has got to hold these developers responsible to make sure that we have low-income housing available for those that are in a situation, as say, a voucher. They get a job, they better their lives, and now they go into buying a house for the first time. Doesn't mean they get to get a $450,000 home. Doesn't mean they get to be at a $500,000 home. I'm for the housing, I think housing is so needed here, but we have to figure out how we hold them accountable for their 20% for low-income people. And are they going to allow people to buy housing for transitional housing, and allow people to come there that are less fortunate as most of us in this room, as re-entry transitional housing, unhoused, mental health? They are all to be welcomed into this community. And Pastor, I know from the heart, being a pastor, that you open your arms to all of those, and God's favorites are the widows, the inmates, and the unhoused and orphans. And so I really hope this council figures out a way to hold this development accountable to low-income families to buy first-time buyers.
That concludes public comment. One more, sorry. Jasmine Peterson?
Good afternoon, or good evening, excuse me, Mayor and council members. I'm Jasmine Peterson, I'm a resident here in Stockton. I just wanted to express that I am excited about a housing project for our community. We desperately need housing. And I appreciated the comments made by the developer about understanding the affordability crisis that face our residents and all of us, as well as the comments about who gets to be a homeowner in our community. I actually, as a transportation and mobility advocate, wanted to uplift a request or something for consideration with regards to how residents, future residents of this development are going to be able to access critical services in the city center, as well as in the downtown area. I think, just reflecting on my experience as a Stocktonian, there are serious challenges with how folks get around and get to services. I think about the young people that I've worked with over the years, who live in the northern communities that are sprawling and don't always have easy routes to services like Delta College, to healthcare, to work. And I think it would be great to hear more about how we can do more with regard to transportation access and improvements. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Are there any questions before I close the public hearing? Because we'll go to comments then after that. Do you have a question?
Yeah.
From Member Villalobos?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Looking at some of these images, talking about parks, I didn't really see what's going to be in these parks, you know? Is there playgrounds? Is there going to be all types, not just, you know, land, just grass? Just want to know what's, what's on there, because I didn't even see that, I didn't even see the images of the housing as well.
No, so the parks would be designed in conjunction with our Public Works Department. There are some standards and guidelines that would be used, so that is what goes into the design and development of parks. Looks like there might be some handouts for you, so I can defer if you'd like.
Okay, and then my second question, how long will, huh?
She said bless you.
Oh, sorry. How long would Phase One take to finish up?
So I don't want to speak for the developers, so I'll hand it to them, but it's market-driven. I mean, it, you.
It's market-driven, but let's just kind of say we're in a normal environment. Our best guess is that the first house would not be available for sale until about two years from annexation. So part of that reasoning why it takes so long is we have, the annexation process takes a while, but then we have to do the engineering and design. That's called the improvement plan, and that's where we demonstrate how we're going to build the roads and sewer and all the infrastructure. So that takes time for staff to review and go back and forth. Then you have to build the site, and taking, building the site takes probably another six months, eight months, and then building the house takes five, six months as well. So you add all that up, and we don't start for two years at least.
Yeah, I was just big in part.
Yeah. I was just big in parks and, you know, I just wanted to make sure we got stuff for the youth, seniors.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we've put together a conceptual plan that we've, that we brought forward with the planning commission. And I thought it was going to be part of this slide deck here, and I apologize. But yeah, we have playground equipment, basketball court, tot, tot lots. In addition to the playground equipment, we have pickleball, soccer field.
Oh, pickleball.
And I don't know if that's a good or bad thing.
Yeah.
But, and then, and then just in terms of your, it sounds like you have a keen interest in the parks and open space. And, you know, here, and again, I thought it was going to be a slide, the wellness walk is amazing. We've done it in other communities and it's been, we're doing it in one. It hasn't been landscaped yet, but it's just coming out in Manteca. And I've done it up in Roseville. But really, it becomes like this pedestrian superhighway where all the neighbors get out and they, hey, you want to go for a walk or whatever? And they start connecting with their friends in the different neighborhoods. And then on the schools, you got these whole packs of kids with their backpacks, you know, going out on their skateboards, bikes, or with their parents. It's, it's, it's a really cool thing, the way to connect the whole neighborhood. And so, as you can tell, I'm pretty excited.
Phenomenal. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Councilwoman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to comment that when I met with the developers, I was really excited about hearing the whole life cycle. Councilmember Enriquez and I were at a meeting today and we were talking about how it's very hard for individuals to buy their first home. And in this project, you identify first time home buyers and the project, you know, the process of, you know, getting married and then the next step. And then even further, when their kids move out of, you know, they're off to college and they move out of the, out of the home. So I just really appreciate the thought that you took into, that you put into this project and envisioning a whole family style environment. So I just want to thank you.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to say the time spent meeting with you all about this project was very inspiring. I really appreciate, me and Councilmember Blower were just kind of speaking on the side, how thoughtful this development concept was. The follow-up with my colleague in her district. The only complaint I have is that it's not in my district, to be very clear. I do appreciate the thoughtfulness on affordable housing because we hear that a lot. To the public comment that was made around the need for low income affordable housing, Councilmember Enriquez and I did meet with staff about having a presentation within 90 days from when we had the discussion about what the continuum of housing in our community looks like from a practical standpoint, because there's folks that are unhoused, and then there are homeowners, and then there's market rate. Market rate is different in different sides of town, low income, affordable and affordable with a capital A and little a. Like, we've learned a lot. And so, you know, I don't want to see lumping developers in that discussion of the concerns that we have with developers, because everybody needs to be able to stand on their own. I will say for this group, and I'm a very critical person, I, I found it very encouraging to see the thoughtfulness that went into this project. And I would just hope that you all figure out how to get some land in my district and bring it. Well, I think there is something coming over. But, yeah, I know, but just, just bring some more that way. But, but again, thank you for the, the amount of thought that went into this. Thank you.
Yes. And I would just add to that, you know, the attention to detail. We don't often see that. And as was said about the varying types of houses, you know, some people don't want to do a yard. They don't want to take care of a yard, depending on, you know, their age or, or their time that's available. But getting people into their starter home or downsizing, we definitely need, need that to happen, because we can't do the continuum of housing without it. So we can't have people get out of the rental market unless they can afford to get into the homeownership market. And homeownership, is what I said before, it leads to generational wealth. We want to get people out of the cycle that they might be in and literally on the path to, you know, being, being healthy, well in our community. And I think having, having the opportunity to afford a home leads to that. So Vice Mayor.
And thank you, Mayor. You triggered something, another part of the discussion we were having around the continuum, because it's, Pat, this is your, you brought this up, so you should probably pay attention. The continuum of housing is not just the developer's responsibility. As a city, we need to make sure we have programs for people to be able to go from Sierra Vista into training programs, programs in partnership with hospitals or other companies to be able to get, get job skills, to be able to move into proper employment, to be able to fix their credit, to be prepared for homeownership. I've always said, like, Sierra Vista should be looked at as, you know, if, if you got to go from unhoused into low, low income housing, that, that's where you start or, or any of those developments. But then how do we get them from there to here, right? And so that's not just the developer's responsibility. We as a city need to figure that out. And so I'm hopeful that when that continuum comes back, that those components are thoughtful as part of that process. But again, just agree with everything the mayor said, and just thank you again for a very thoughtful project.
Okay. I can entertain a motion at this point?
Motion.
Second. We have a motion and, oh, do I need to do?
Just a point of clarity, Mayor, that the, there's a modification to the, the motion. It is to adopt the resolution to certify the EIR and the statement of overriding consideration and adopt a mitigation, mitigation, monitoring and reporting program, a resolution to approve the general plan land use amendment, and an ordinance for the pre-zoning of the APNs listed in your staff report. And then finally, a resolution authorizing the filing of an annexation application with LAFCO.
But can we take that all in one motion?
Absolutely.
Okay. So the staff recommendation is up on the screen?
Motion.
And we have a, a motion?
Second.
And a second by Councilwoman Padilla on that. Council, please vote. Motion carries seven zero. Yay. Thank you. Okay. Now we're moving on to 16.1, adoption of an ordinance establishing Title IX, Chapter 9.18 of the Stockton Municipal Code regulating use of facial coverings. Now, I see Vice Mayor's light blinking. I don't know, you want to start before Taryn?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll just say really quickly, I mean, this, this item came before a ledge. I brought it before a ledge as something that we wanted to work on, but bring before the full council to get everybody's thought, thoughts and input in this. Because one thing that I was seeing in my district and then started to see in other districts, like District Three, with one of the robberies at a jewelry store in my district, people riding around with masks on, looking for people. I was just at Starbucks across the street the other day, and somebody walked into the bank with a mask on. You know, we've come out of COVID and now we're into the conversation of how are we thinking about increasing safety in our community, but also acknowledging that there could be concerns with such an ordinance. But this was something, Mayor and Council, that I wanted to bring before the council for full discussion. I've seen support of it online, but also understand the complexity. So looking forward to City Attorney sharing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Taryn Jones, Assistant City Attorney. I'm here to discuss the recommendation from the ledge committee regarding the potential adoption of an ordinance regulating the use of face coverings. I will be going through the slides which address the committee history, which the Vice Mayor began to address. But if you have enforcement questions or questions regarding statistics, I'll defer those to PD. So on June 16th, the legislation environmental committee reviewed and considered a proposed ordinance, ordinance regulating the use of facial coverings in public and private spaces. This version is reflected in Attachment A of your staff report. At the June meeting, the committee forwarded a recommendation to the full city council for the adoption of the ordinance following review and collaboration with the police department. However, following the review of that proposed ordinance, the police department expressed concerns regarding the enforcement of the ordinance. Accordingly, the chair of the committee, Councilmember Enriquez and Vice Mayor Lee directed staff to return back to committee to review Philadelphia's face ordinance, face covering ordinance and consideration of potential changes to that proposed ordinance. On October 20th, the committee reviewed and considered potential changes which are reflected in Attachment B. At the October meeting, the committee voted to forward both versions A and B, which is why I'm going through in detail about both of them, to the full council, full council for review and consideration. So because they were both forwarded for your approval, I will now go through the differences between the two versions. So first, the Stockton Police Department reviewed robbery data on, over the past two and a half years to assess the prevalence of suspects using face coverings during the commission of these crimes. And analysis provides insight into the frequency. And this statistical information is reflected in Attachment C and is broken down in your staff report. Overall, the data demonstrates a consistent pattern with roughly one in four robberies involving the use of face coverings. So between versions A and two, staff revised the ordinance in section one, findings and intent, and section 9.18010 to remove the reference to an increase, because while criminal activity had been witnessed, we hadn't recognized an increase. So that was one of the first changes that was made between the two versions. Additionally, we reviewed the Philadelphia ordinance. And in reviewing the current Philadelphia code, staff observed two primary differences between the code and the Attachment A version. And that includes, one, that Philadelphia has a monetary fine for violations, and two, subsection four of the Philadelphia code has identified specific areas where masks are prohibited. Because staff believed both of those additions would help clarify the code and allow for safer enforcement, Attachment B was revised to incorporate them as follows. So section 9.18.050 was amended to add an administrative penalty in the amount of $1,000. So this section also references and incorporates the appeal provisions, which are consistent throughout the municipal code. So under this version reflected in Attachment B, both a criminal or administrative enforcement would be permissible. Additionally, section 9.18.030 was amended to clarify and add the specific locations where masks are prohibited. And we specifically added the language directly from the Philadelphia code. Due to that, we also revised 9.18.020 to remove the definitions of public and private spaces, as those were no longer applicable. However, we did continue to include the intent language to minimize running afoul of the rights of protected speech. And so we also updated the title of the ordinance to reflect those revisions in Attachment B. So at this time, consistent with the committee recommendation, the council has asked to review the proposed ordinance reflected in Attachment A, as well as the revisions reflected in Attachment B, and consider the adoption of an ordinance and direct staff to, regarding which, if any revisions, it was like incorporated into that ordinance if it so chooses. And I'm available for questions as well as PD.
I don't, I don't see any lights. I, I do have a question for you, Taryn, and then a question for PD. How, how is the current case law? I, I see that there's a fine included with this. There are some different nuances. But how is case law currently enforced on people with a face mask committing a crime?
Understood. I think that you're asking what current state codes there are that already regulate this. So there is a penal code provision, which is penal code 185, which criminalizes the wearing of a face covering during the commission of a crime or from the escape of a crime.
Okay. And then is that then an enhancement on the charge?
So I would have to defer to PD on how that's charged, because I don't do criminal enforcement. But I would believe this would be in addition to the underlying crime. Correct.
Okay. So Captain Morris, would that be an enhancement? It would be an additional charge?
So typically, the way standard, the way the law works is that if we have someone that has escaped or we are in pursuit of someone, then they have that evidence within themselves, whether it's a ski mask and they were in the commission of a crime and attempting to escape, we would charge the penal code section. So that penal code section is already in place. It's something that we can utilize if it's proven that it meets the criteria. This would be in addition to, as it stands, as a Stockton Municipal Code. So there's already something in place.
So what is the current, then, you know, potential penalty for that? If they get successfully charged with wearing a ski mask while committing a crime?
Correct. So that is considered a misdemeanor. You can get about 180 days in county jail.
180?
180 days, correct. To include a, any probation that they judge may assign.
Okay.
And of course, if I may add too, though, that is in addition, if it was a robbery or whatever it may have been, that is in addition to that.
Okay. And then Taryn mentioned police concerns regarding enforcement. Can you expand upon that?
Yeah. So if I want to be honest with you, you know, we're always looking at a balanced approach. And we're going to protect the First Amendment, also Fourteenth Amendment, and ensuring that they have due process. It's about ensuring that we're not over policing the black and brown community. And we're talking about minority communities. They do have the right to be in the community. And I know there's questions about whether or not they should be wearing a ski mask or a, perhaps a beanie, whatever it may be. We're not here to designate who should wear what. We're more concerned of being, ensuring that the community is safe, not necessarily their attire.
Okay. Councilmember Blower?
I'm just curious about some clarification. It says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to wear a face covering ski mask in any school building, recreation center, daycare, park, city-owned building, or any mode of public transportation, including not limited, not limited to buses, trains, trolleys, and subways." So does this only apply in those instances? If somebody goes and robs a bank and they're wearing a ski mask, does that also count? I mean, it's not in that list. So.
So as it relates to the Stockton Municipal Code, the way it is written, those are identified at, as places of high risk, high public spaces where people and/or children and families are consistently located, to include like daycares, recreation centers, city buildings, public transportation, where people may be vulnerable. And so for those purposes, there may be a fear. I'll give you an example. City Council, if somebody walks in here with a ski mask, they may be concerned of fear or intimidation threats. There's reasonings why these places were selected, but really it's because it's an increased traffic spaces.
So are sidewalks considered public spaces?
So I just wanted to clarify. So the first question you asked about a robbery involving a mask. So that would fall under penal code 185, as well as the robbery provision. It would not fall under the version B of your ordinance. Your version A of the ordinance does include public and private spaces, so it is broader. So to answer your question, no, it would not apply. Yes, it would still be criminal.
Yeah. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of things. One, I was very active in the Trayvon Martin campaign and friends with the family. And I understand the profiling that comes with scenarios where people are wearing hoodies, beanies, hajabs. We talked about religious purposes. So to be very clear, I think the mayor raised some really good points and want to talk about that. When we initially started talking about this, we started saying, okay, like, we see the robbery in Lincoln Center. So like, that's broad daylight, everybody wearing masks, robbing the jewelry store. Then we see somebody riding around in Foo for Less parking lot with ski mask on, looking for people to shoot. Nightingale, we started seeing an increase in gangs wearing face coverings, right? So initially, when the committee looked at putting forth this ordinance, this ordinance, it was like ban on face coverings everywhere. So for example, if you're standing outside doing an interview in front of City Hall and somebody's running up with a ski mask on or a mask, are they running up to say hello? Or are they running up for something else? Then it got into how are we, you know, potential enforcement profiling? What could that look like? So there was lots of thoughts that went in. There's lots of research. And I think what the City Attorney, Taryn, shared was looking at Philadelphia and what other practices of what people were doing and how we were approaching this. So that's why this is. So that's why this is more of a conversation about what direction we want to go, if any. I think for me, my concern is that, and I'll just go back to, you know, at Starbucks across the street from City Hall, where we do have police presence, right? Right outside. Somebody walking in the bank with a ski mask on in broad daylight, I don't know how that would be received. And I know in here, we're not saying they would be banned from going into that location with a mask on, right? So initial conversation was, how do we address the idea of somebody walking in a bank or walking in a store or walking in wherever with a ski mask on or face covering on without infringing on certain rights that may be protected and putting our officers in a position where the enforcement of it creates a scenario like a Trayvon or something like that? So this is why it's a council discussion on like how we want to proceed. But I do think in what was shared today was a more, I don't want to say condensed version or, I don't even want to say watered down, but we did put a lot of thought into being, to considering all the things that we're talking about tonight.
I, so with that, having done, had to deal with ski masks at the schools that I've worked at, or even kids that have beanies on that have masks, they're wearing like the COVID kind of masks, even though they're, they don't have it or it's not as prevalent, but they're wearing it for a reason. They do want to conceal their identity. We know this. I don't want us to get all the way over to the point, though, which is why there's been some amendments to this, that we bring back something like stop and frisk, because that's ultimately what you can do based on language. Going into the bank, I see school building, rec center, if it's our rec centers, daycare, you know, public transportation. I'm trying to see how we enforce that, because even at the high school, I think I was the only one going around saying, pull back the top, you know, you can keep this, but pull it, pull it back. So I don't know how we do the overall enforcement of that, Chief. I don't know if you want to interject either on this. I mean, or, I mean, you, San Jose, did they do something similar in San Jose or?
No, we didn't. You know, it's concerning and it puts us in a tough situation, to be honest with you, right? Because what happens when they don't want to remove the mask? What happens if they take off running and now we're chasing someone that's concealed, right? These are things that have to be considered, and the community mayor and council have to be okay with what happens due to someone's choices. So it's almost, is the juice worth the squeeze? Is it worth putting my officers in a situation that could escalate if someone doesn't want to comply with that ordinance?
Okay. Thank you. And Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a serious consideration. I think as a community, we hear oftentimes, folks want a safer community, safer walkable community. And, you know, I think when I, when I see the department post pictures of people with masks on saying, if you see these people, let us know, well, we can't let you know because we don't know who they are. You know what I mean? So like, I understand, like, we're in this interesting position. And that's why I think for council consideration, and of course, you know, you have the challenging task of leading the department to enforce something that could put us in this situation. I just, I guess I would ask us, what, what do we do to address that issue? I mean, if you addressed it in the school, so like, what was your experience? I mean, like, I, I'm not coming in hard pressed to like, we have to do this or have to do that. It's really a council conversation about what we want to do, because I do hear from the community that they are concerned about ski masks. I do see online, we're trying to see something, say something. We want to, we want to make it possible. The one thing I will add as an additional, I did meet with a group of gang, gangs in OVP, and one of the things, one of the perspectives that I didn't consider when I brought this up was, one of the gang members said, man, if you take our mask away, they're going to know who we are when we go outside. Well, well, don't go outside and do things you don't want to be recognized for, you know? So anyway, I bring it up and ask the council to, you know, to continue to consider it.
And I had a conversation with young people that were at the one school off on Park, just south of Maya Angelou Library. And, and they actually talked about how people judge them, you know? Okay, their pants are sagging or they're wearing a certain color and they didn't appreciate being judged before you even have a conversation with them, that they're not all thugs, that they're not, you know, that they don't want to be perceived as negative, because then you kind of start to build that self-fulfilling prophecy of people are always thinking, oh, you're, you're, you know, you're doing something you shouldn't be doing, even though they might not at all. And I had a group of students that were soccer players, honor roll. They got, this was a long time ago, they got pulled over and they were all made to sit on the curb and said, you know, what gang are you in? What gang are you in? And they're like, we're on the Venture Academy soccer team. Like, is that, I mean, that's, you know, but one of the students got very upset about it because here he is like, you know, why, why was I even asked that? I've never done anything like that. And I bring that up only because, yeah, at the high school, I was the only one enforcing it. Nobody else was. So depending on who you come across, so chief might enforce it and captain might not. Graviet may enforce it and, I'm trying to, well, yes, fog may not. I was just thinking if I saw Sherman, I would say Sherman wouldn't. You know, I, I don't know how we, how we battle that or how you message that or anything. Now, I like the idea of a fine, you know, like if we can add an enhanced fine to that on top of the 180 days or whatnot. I just don't want to go down that slippery slope where, like as you said, you know, somebody says, we got kids all the time that say, no, I'm not pulling up my pants, or no, I'm not giving you my vape pen, or no, I'm not doing this, or I'm not doing that. And.
See, and that's.
Pick your battles.
See, and that's my concern. It's not the punishment, it's a confrontation that could happen, right? And what about the religious exemptions where certain people are masked up for religious reasons? I mean, it, it's just too many challenges and I get what we're trying to do, but the crimes are committed when they're masking up. They're masking up right before they commit the crime and they're committing a crime. So we have criminal codes already established that address those issues, but to just have a general ordinance that says, hey, you're masked up and that gives the police department the right to stop you, I'm not sure if that would be accepted.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I'm trying to figure this out. The difference from a ski mask. So let's say we, somehow that gets banned, whatever, right? And the ordinance, what if they went with some dark glasses and, you know, a bandana or just a regular mask? Is that considered the same thing as well? Or, you know what I mean? Like.
You know, and that's a good question, and that's open to interpretation, right? And I would, I would consider that person being masked. You know, you could have a COVID mask on and dark shades. I could see that as being masked. That's where we would ask our city attorney's office, can they defend our actions, right? That's where it comes, can you defend an incident that goes sideways due to something that's, enforcement action is taking place over someone that's masked up with a scarf and shades or something?
Vice Mayor? And then we'll go to public comment.
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to think that our, I mean, I've had enough interaction with the department to know we have strong leadership and we have really good officers who use good judgment every day, right? And so one of the tasks that our officers have to be able to use beyond critical thinking skills are making decisions that are complicated. And I think the officers do that every day. And so, so there's that piece. The second piece is that if you look at Yolanda Amen, who has a N95 mask on, I think we've all gone through a horrific national or global crisis with COVID to know the distinction between an N95 mask and somebody that has on a face covering that would raise a concern. I think if I see Yolanda walking up to me with the N95 mask, I probably won't feel the same as if I seen somebody running up with a ski mask on in broad daylight. And I've been in scenarios in the community where I've seen people riding up, you know, with a ski mask on. And I won't lie, it's not, I mean, it's not even about what color their skin is, because this happened to be a white person wearing a ski mask in broad daylight, running up to me with, on the bike. And the initial thing I was like thinking was, how's this going to go down? And I think that, I think for everybody in our community who has that interaction, I don't even think people think about the color of the skin, and I don't think our officers would see somebody white, black, brown, or otherwise and go, this person's going to be that. I think initially, you're going to think, what, what do you have this mask on for, right? I love the perspective in the schools, how you all do it, but to your point, nothing we do, code enforcement, ski mask, face covering, the enforcement is critical. So if we're not even going to enforce it, then it's like, why have it, right? But if we do have it, we do have to have it enforced. So again, this was more of a, I'm not hell-bent on we have to have it or not have it, but I do think, see something, say something with ski mask on when we can't say anything is one thing. And the second part is, people in this community do feel very comfortable wearing ski mask in broad daylight, going in banks, going in stores, riding down the street, and that, that is concerning. But again, that's why it's a council discussion on what we want to do, if anything.
Do we have public comment on this item?
We do. May I have Alyssa Leva to the podium?
I'd like to start my comment by saying that I am using my First Amendment right to promote transparency for the political retaliation that I faced by Stockton Police Department. Modesto has a municipal code with ski masks and they're actually in, they're going to go to court soon because the ACLU has filed that Modesto's mask ban is unconstitutional. And at an anti ICE protest in the Central Valley in Modesto, they disproportionately coerced and arrested folks who were wearing a mask on the premise that they may have been doing wrong, even though they were just abiding by their First Amendment right. This group of protesters, Central Valley Bipot Coalition, are majority people of color, whereas the same, the same ordinance was not on, used on other protesters with the No Kings protesters in Modesto. But I wanted to bring light to the concern of our law enforcement being retaliatory with advocates, especially in a time of contention for our marginalized communities, where Stockton Police Department has stated that they're not going to be working with ICE, yet they are aiding Sacramento detainees to our facility. I had a peaceful round of protests this year that were also noted by Teen Vogue, and our community stands strong with our immigrant communities. But this was a voicemail that I got from our police department where they infringed on myself, my First Amendment right. They assumed that my protest was going to be violent. And I state again that I am a board member of Stockton Stands and abolitionist 501(c)(3) and 4. We have the right to be, to organize and to mobilize and to abide by our First Amendment right without the intimidation of our law enforcement.
Hi, Ms. Leva. This is Lieutenant Griner with Stockton Police Department. I give you a call in regards to one of the protests you guys are involved with this weekend. I know in times past, we've tried to reach out to you. Just want to reach out to you just so that we want to assist you, want to help you in any way we can. Just want to touch bases with you on some of the things you guys have planned and then just some of the guidelines that we're hoping we could have followed, just so everything is peaceful and there's no issues with the folks that are attending. So if you mind giving me a call back, miss, I greatly appreciate it. My telephone number is 209-937-5640.
I do not need the police department's permission to organize a protest, and neither do any of our residents to express their First Amendment right. I did not answer. I don't have to, and I will take you to court if you pass this.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
She said you don't have one.
Pat Barrett.
No. There's so many. I have one.
Just go ahead, Pat. Just go ahead. Okay, so a lot of things here. So as a person, as a survivor of violent crime, okay, as, and I don't put my business, my personal business out there, I'm going to put my personal business out there. As an ex-felon, as a person in recovery, I am really against face masks in public. Number one, if you have something to hide, okay, I get it. You want to buck up on the system. I get that. You don't have anything to hide, you're not going to buck up on the system. If Captain Morris came up to me and said, hey, Pat, that wouldn't work, huh? She came up to me and asked me to remove my mask. If I'm there because it's cold and I have a face mask on, I'm going to take it off. You know what I mean? The other thing, if you're going to find somebody, you know, you're going to ask for their ID so that you can send out a ticket and let them know, so now you're going to know who this person is. The bottom line is, is that I am a survivor of a violent crime. I'm a seasoned adult. I want that respect. I want to know who's coming towards me. I want to see who's coming towards me. When it is the entity that the city has control over, I get it. A bank? Hey, you walking up the sidewalk with a mask on? I'm going to ask, why are you walking by a bank with the mask on? I don't care who you are, I'm going to say it as a citizen. But when you walk into the bank, that's the bank's discretion there. But outside the bank, that's our discretion. And I feel safer when there is no mask on somebody's face. I'm sorry. I'm comfortable with that because I have been a victim of a violent crime and I'm down for it. And I know it might be hard for the police department, but it's the same thing as a Terry stop when you stood on a car. You never know what's going to happen when you walk up to a car. You're never going to know what's going to happen when you get near the car and you say, hey, you got to step outside. It's the same thing. We all live that risk, but for the people that are my age and for other people that are victims of a violent crime, domestic violence, I see it 100% down for it.
That concludes public comment.
Okay. I, you know, a couple of things. So I appreciate what Ms. Leva said, you know, about the ACLU, and she slid in there right at the end, and I'll sue you, so I did hear that. You know, and, and to Ms. Barrett's comment, you know, what if there isn't a cop around and somebody walks up with a ski? I'm just, you know, we have people that are getting the pulp beat out of them on the front lawn of a house and a call goes in and we might not be able to dispatch anybody right then and there at that moment. I mean, tell me if I'm wrong. Am I wrong?
If there's a, if there's an active violence going on, 98% of the time, we can get someone dispatched to that area within a few minutes.
But if you're already out, if you're on code blue and you're already out on places.
That's a priority one. Code blue is irrelevant to that.
Okay, okay, well.
And if I may, Mayor, just to address, I think it's, it's really relevant. I don't want to mislead the council in any way about what this is compared to what was spoken about in regards to ICE, in regards to protests. It is absolutely our standard, but we ask our staff to reach out to organizers to mitigate any issues. And the only laws that we do enforce are not, are nothing to do with ICE, only state and local laws that we are unbiased and have to enforce. We do not aid, we do not assist in any way. And that call that you took was absolutely from incident commander to reach out to an organizer to say, basically, how can we make sure this goes well? It's nothing against any particular organization. It's our standard protocol, and it's followed throughout the nation with progressive police departments to ensure, this is what we're asking you to do, please don't do this, but you can do this. And what the asks are, are don't break the law. That's, that's what those conversations are, just to be clear to the council.
Okay. So then, in your professional opinion, how would you then address this if council were to pass this ordinance? How would you tell, what would you tell your rank and file? I mean, what would they?
If, if the ordinance passes as, as stated, then we have to be very clear with this, with our men and women who are out in the streets every single day on how this would be enforced in accordance with the municipal code. And this is where this discussion, as the vice mayor has been perfectly clear about, needs to happen, and we need to be very clear on what you want or what you stipulate in the, in the code. You give us direction, we give them direction on how to enforce. We would not create nor we'd take away from the code that you approve, because that, that's what the whole process is. And we would do without prejudice, as we always do in a professional way. That's what I can tell you.
Right. So parks, you know, public spaces, that will, that would fall under the purview of the police department, where a bank would have to handle it, a school would have to handle it.
It's a private business, like the schools, et cetera, and city property, we have a much more influence over. much more influence over as to who comes in and how they present themselves and such. Public transportation, same thing. Now, private businesses, that's their prerogative on how they would like to operate in that, in, within those boundaries, and that's their prerogative to do so.
Okay, okay, thank you. Councilmember Blower?
Thank you, Mayor. I think our police department does a very good job with a very tough set of circumstances that you have, you know, dealing with this crime that goes on in our city. And so when I look at something like this, I think getting your input from the people that are going to implement this and deal with it is very important. So I guess my question is, like, will something like this help you to keep us safer, or will it hinder you or be a pain? Now, chief kind of sounded like it was, would be a little bit more of a pain, but do you think there's a way to make this so that it's a good tool? I just want to help equip you guys to make your job easier.
There's nothing wrong with having more options, right? It's another tool in the tool belt. Is the community, are you guys going to get what you want out of this? That I'm unsure on. Is it a priority call if someone calls and say, hey, there's a person wearing a mask in the park? No. It's going to be quite some time before someone gets there, right? That is not a priority call. That is not someone being victimized. So those are things that we need to think about when we launch new ordinances, as far as the capacity to carry it through, right? Because what's the sense of having ordinance if you don't have the capacity to enforce it? And again, it's, it is another tool, it does give us another option if we're in one of those circumstances where it applies, but then again, it's about what you guys want.
Councilwoman Padilla?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to echo the mayor, you know, we're living in extremely different times when it comes to the youth. And in our schools, we have a rule that you can't wear a hoodie, and we literally have kids that are wearing the hoodie, you know, almost covering their face. And to her point, you know, I'm the one in my class that is enforcing that, but then they go to the next class and they're not. And so there's lack of consistency there. And I, you know, I don't know if we're looking for a decision tonight. I would have liked to hear more from the community, their thoughts on, you know, how they feel about this ordinance, if it's going to cause any racial profiling, or if they feel violated, or if they would even comply if somebody, you know, told them you need to remove your mask. I don't know if it's a time to, if we're open to bringing it back to ledge or even another discussion here to expand on that.
Yeah, I mean, if I can, Mayor, and Councilwoman Padilla, I welcome that. I mean, sending it back to ledge and letting people come and actually having a time for the public to weigh in, I think that's a critical part. I think chief's input, assistant chief's input is helpful, and I think also the mayor's point about enforcement, because again, I think if we come up with something to help our officers and help the community, but it's not enforced, or it's not enforced consistently, or there's not more education and awareness brought to the community, it's a waste of time. And I don't want to put our officers in a position to have that type of confrontation. But yeah, I'd be willing to send this back to ledge to have a broader conversation with the public.
Okay, so if there's not a motion, or is there going to be a motion, or we can move it to the, to a future meeting for further discussion and involve the public?
I don't know if we need to make a motion and send it back to ledge, but send it back to ledge for a...
Further discussion.
Yeah.
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for this to go back to ledge. Council, please vote. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay. Moving on to item 16.2, adopt, oh, sorry. Moving on to item 16.2, adopt ordinances amending multiple sections of chapter 15.32 and 15.34 of the Stockton Municipal Code pertaining to the implementation of the vacant commercial property and vacant lot registration program and adopt a resolution advocating necessary funds to pay for program startup costs.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sorry, I know that's a mouthful for the title on this one. My name is Rob Liddicott. I'm the Deputy Director for Community Development overseeing business operations, and tonight I am bringing a few recommended amendments for implementation purposes of this program for your consideration. So to briefly cover a little bit of background, back on July 29th, the council adopted section 15.34 of the municipal code, along with new fees to establish a new registration program. In August, Community Development was asked to implement and manage that new program. So during August and September, in conjunction with the City Manager's Office, code enforcement, and other affected departments, the team identified several code amendments that we believe are necessary for effective program implementation, along with initial startup costs necessary to fund the program until it begins to generate the revenue necessary to cover itself. In October, we reviewed these recommendations with the council's Legislative and Environmental Committee, who agreed and asked that we bring these items back to council for consideration So to start off, the proposed amendments to code section 15.32, which applies to the maintenance, security, and rehabilitation of abandoned and vacant properties, the proposed amendments bring section 1532 into alignment with the new registration program under 15.34. So all of the red lines are included in your packet, but to summarize them, it incorporates commercial properties into this section of code because the current 1532 only focuses on residential properties. It also strengthens the city's enforcement tools by expanding the city's inspection ability and code enforcement's ability to assess penalties for violators. It also establishes liability insurance requirements for commercial properties in alignment with section 1534. So essentially, the amendments to 1532 just bring that section into alignment with the new program. Next, there are four proposed amendments to the registration program under 15.34. First, we believe there was a typo in the definition of the vacant commercial buildings originally adopted. So what was presented to council on July 29th stated that the definition of a vacant commercial building, it becomes considered vacant after 180 days of not being occupied, but the code language that was adopted states 30 days. So we believe this was just a typo in what was originally adopted, so one of those proposed recommendations is to correct that. The second proposed amendment narrows the definition of vacant lot based on its zoning designation. So the current code is applicable to all vacant lots irrespective of any zoning district. However, that does include the port, public facilities, open space, and university-college zoning designations, and we believe that these should be excluded for practical purposes, but still keep the ordinance aligned with council's intent. Specifically for the port designation, the port exercises a high degree of autonomy over the land within its boundaries and is generally outside of city's authority for project consideration. Public facilities and open space designations are by their nature really not developable. And then the university-college zoning designation is really a placeholder designation for potential future use. There's no parcels currently zoned that within the city. The third proposed amendment, excuse me. Sorry. So the third proposed amendment removes the registration exemption for properties maintained in accordance with 1532. So this was, we brought this back to ledge committee for clarification, and based on direction received, we're recommending that this exemption be redlined, so that would require those properties, regardless of their maintenance status, to register for the program. The last proposed amendment to 1534 would allow staff to develop administrative guidelines, which would allow the team to work out the nuances of program management with city manager approval, without having to return to council for additional code amendments, and so long as those guidelines are aligned with the intent of the council and code, and we could certainly make those administrative guidelines available to council for review once city manager signs off and after they're developed. So lastly, the program startup costs that are necessary for the software and the mailers to get the program off the ground is estimated at $21,000. So included in tonight's request is a one-time allocation from the general fund to cover these costs, and again, the program is anticipated to be self-funded once it's up and running. So moving forward, tonight, we are requesting council approval to the proposed amendments and the funding allocation. Next month, code enforcement is planning on bringing the Tlemi software contract to council for approval, which is what would be utilized for this program, and we anticipate developing those program administrative guidelines, along with working with the vendors and code enforcement on the software configuration during the first quarter of the coming year, with the initial analysis and registration mailers being sent out to property owners in May. So the recommendations, it's not just me, right? The audio is going out? Okay. So the recommendations are, before you, should I continue or wait? You guys can hear me? Okay, all right. So, so the recommendations for tonight are to adopt an ordinance amending section 1532 of the code, adopt an ordinance amending section 1534 of the code, and approve a resolution authorizing a budget amendment to appropriate the $21,000 from the general fund for the program startup costs, and then authorize the city manager to take the appropriate actions to carry this out. And I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
So that 21,000 is coming out of the general fund contingency, which has been a conversation of this council. Would that money then, once the fees have come in, would that money then be put back into the general fund contingency account?
Defer into city manager.
We need all the money in there we can get. So I would like to add one thing to this. I would like to have a review after the first full year of the, you know, what the standing is, you know, what is the, you know, how is the program working, what has been the feedback for the program, basically looking at the, you know, whether or not it's working. I think $21,000 is, it's an amount of money, but when you're looking at nearly a billion-dollar budget, and the fact that it could potentially bring in, what, 350,000 or somewhere around that...
Early estimations, yeah.
I think that that only helps us in ensuring that people take care of their, of their properties, and if not, then, you know, we've taken care of them. So I don't know if there are any questions from council? Then I will ask for public comment. I know that somebody put a card in.
Pat Barrett, please.
Somebody did. This needs a chair.
Pat Barrett, resident. Hey, look, I was talking to somebody, you know, I'm for that blight fees, and I'm for the empty lot fees. I'm cool with that. Bring the money back. The problem was, I was talking to somebody the other day, and they said, here's the problem with it, is that these guys that get fined for their empty buildings, they turn around just before the deadline of paying it and sell it to investors. Then you find them again, and they turn around, and I'm like, okay, fine, so they got to keep catching up and selling this property. I'm not touching it. Maybe somebody else did, I don't know. The problem, what I'm saying is not, I'm not complaining, I'm saying heads up, how can we address this if we find a owner of an empty building or a blight building and guarantee that they are going to be responsible to pay those fees even though they do sell the building before those dues, those fees are due? And so I'd like to see that resolution done too, to make sure that they pay before they sell.
And I'm sure it's similar to property taxes on that, that, you know, when the property is purchased, then new, the new owner is then responsible for it, and I see Ms. Ocasio coming, and you can answer that.
Hi, Stephanie Ocasio, Director of Community Development. So this is not a type of fee that would be like a lien on the tax roll where it would get paid at a property sale. It's a, it's like a, it would go to collections, but it would not, it couldn't, we couldn't tie up escrow for like change of ownership, but it would go, if uncollected, it could get referred to collections.
So if it's not going then on their property taxes, they can't use it as a tax deduction because it's going to collections?
I can't speak to tax deductions.
Because a lot of fines and fees when they come, oh, hello.
Good evening. So Alma Rosa Vargas, I'm over Code Enforcement Police Services, what is my new title? Code and Housing Enforcement Official, I'm sorry. So when it comes to these registrations, if they do not register, we will cite with a violation warning notice. That notice gives us recording rights, so we will actually lien the property to ensure that either they're going to register, or when they sell, our charges are paid. Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Any other comments from council? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Council, please vote. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you for all your work, ledge committee and staff. Moving on to our next item, 16.3, presentation of Office of Public Transparency, Information and Community, or Information Communication. Oh, your time's up, sorry. No more speaking.
Good evening, council.
We can't move too soon.
My name is Tony Manner. I'm the Public Information Officer for the City of Stockton. Over the last six weeks, we've been meeting with various departments of the City of Stockton. We met with 13 different departments to discuss their ongoing communications desires, things, stories that they'd like to tell about the work that they're doing to the benefit of the residents of Stockton. We sat down, documented each one of their missions, all the various parts, social media, printed materials, recruitment, things of that nature, came to a total of assessment of a little over 10,000 hours of labor hours that they were requesting. Currently, the Office of Public Transparency has a capacity for about 4,800 hours per year. So we did sit down with the City Manager's Office, the deputy city managers, to discuss prioritization of messaging that we would like to see accomplished over the next 12 months. To get started with, I need to share a little bit of information about what is and is not legal under the Fair Political Practices Commission. So within, for those who don't know, those, within the City of Stockton, within government communications in general, there's things that we're allowed to do, and there's things that we're not allowed to do with taxpayer money. The things that we are allowed to do is cover city-sponsored events where elected officials are present, provide equal coverage to all elected officials at city events, produce content about city services, programs, and operations, document city accomplishments, department achievements, encourage residents to attend or watch city council meetings, promote volunteering and on boards and commissions, support multi-department public safety initiatives, share factual information about city operations. The things that we're not allowed to do is to follow individual council members as a personal PR team, create content that potentially benefits one council member over others, produce campaign materials or campaign-related communications, use public resources to advocate for or against ballot measures, create communications showing favoritism to any elected official. Effectively, the government, the City of Stockton, is not allowed to take sides in any election contest or anything that may give some unfair advantage to one elected position over another. The consequences of violating this is a $5,000 fine per violation and possible legal action against the City of Stockton. So when we met with the City Manager's Office and we started talking about what we'd like to see done over the next 12 months, we were talking about putting these initiatives into three different budgets, or three different buckets, basically our motivations. Basically, our motivations: recruitment, community engagement, and operations and infrastructure. Under recruitment, we met with the fire department. They're pushing towards expanding and hiring for their paramedic firefighter positions. Our HR department has multiple positions that they're trying to fill across multiple departments, including fire, public works, municipal utilities, and our community services department. They wanted to do an overall join-the-Stockton-team campaign, but also our individual programs within the city. So with our community services department, there's, we're working with them to create a lifeguard recruitment program for the, for our local pools. In addition to that, our community services department youth programs, like YES, or our summer programs, to get our youth to know about the opportunities that are available to them within the City of Stockton. As far as community engagement goes, we're committing to three to five social media posts per week, launching our Ask Stockton campaign, which if you watched our break video, was actually the launch of our first commercial for Ask Stockton, showing the public how to use the Ask Stockton app in order to quickly get information about things to better the look and feel of living in Stockton, things like graffiti, illegal dumping, things of that nature. We have our mud infrastructure protection supporting vandalism reduction. During our meetings with our municipal utilities department, some information that they shared with us is that vandalism to our municipal infrastructure cost the City of Stockton between $1.5 and $5 million. So a campaign to make the public aware that if you do see something, say something, get the information out to the public so that we can stop this type of vandalism before it starts to move forward will overall help and reduce the cost to the City of Stockton. Civic engagement, also under operations and infrastructure, are the traditional responsibilities of the Public Information Office, including 24/7 media response, press releases, emergency communications, coordinations. And we are in a unique position this year as we are migrating from Historic City Hall to the new City Hall. So when we were meeting with the clerk's office, one of the things that we talked about was documenting some of the historical elements of this building, the processes of moving the various departments to New City Hall, some of the infrastructure and benefits of the New City Hall building. This is all part of a coordinated campaign to inform the public about the new building and the resources and how to access those resources. In addition to that, the Office of Public Transparency will be working on the permit center explainer content, wayfinding, design, and production. This includes environmental design, signage, kiosk design, video information, elements for those who might be sight impaired, things of that nature. We have a rollout map for the next four quarters, including many, I won't reread them because a lot of these things are already in there, but laying out over the next four quarters what we attempt, or what we will be achieving during this period. This phased approach ensures consistent delivery across concurrent work streams while maintaining quality and strategic focus throughout the fiscal year, all wrapped up at the very end where we will be providing sort of a highlight reel for council to see some of the work we've done over the year. Sorry, I'm getting over a cold, so I have a little bit of the sniffles. One of the bigger campaigns that touches multiple different departments, and this is an example of one of the things that we are launching, is our Ask Stockton campaign, which includes multiple 30-second and up to 90-second social media tutorial commercials, which are launching as of tomorrow after this meeting. The three-minute GovTV commercial, which launched tonight and is available, so when you go and watch the council meetings from home, or if you're watching them on cable, you'll be able to see those. Our social media awareness campaign, which will be available through all platforms, and a tutorial video series of walking-through system features, which was launched to our website today. The performance KPIs that were requested include five video and print campaign elements launched within 60 days for the Ask Stockton platform, 18 informational social media videos produced annually to boost resident adoption and platform literacy, new City Hall project, the eight progress videos that I already discussed, documenting the journey from Historic City Hall to the New City Hall, complete environmental signage and information kiosked, as I described earlier, the three to five post-weeklies, the 208 annual post-annually, the recruitment campaigns, five compelling videos showcasing city careers and culture, template library delivered by June of 2026 for ongoing hiring needs. These are materials that are being produced for the Human Resources Department when they go out to recruitment fairs for the various departments. But it's a template library so that they can then modify them on their own inside of our existing ecosystem to fit needs as they have them. We will also be working, as was made clear is a priority to this council, that the, filling the vacancies on our various commissions is a priority. We will be working on a campaign to achieve that goal. Let's see, we had a...
I have a question before you go to the video.
Sure.
So many of us attended the state of the county, and I know that there are a couple of people up here that had envy of that, of what they did. I remember many years ago, we actually had individual council members did little video snippets in their district that were then at a part of the state of the city. But would that fall under something because it's all of us, it's a big event? Could the, could Optic help with the state-of-the-city presentation?
It would go through the city manager's office. My understanding is as long as it gives equal exposure to the individual council members, it would be okay under the FPBC regulations. It would just be through the city manager.
Mr. Crewe?
I would think that would be a good use of that.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as all equally...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and it would, it's a promotion of the city, so.
Okay. Good. Because I didn't want to leave that out for those that were... Okay. And did you have a video?
We had one. I think the city clerk's loading that up. So this is just a bit of a highlight reel of some of the things that the Optic...
That's why we rarely have videos.
So that's just a small taste of some of the work they've been doing over the last couple of weeks.
And you said you had one for, for the Ask Stockton app?
Yes, so that will be the one that's airing on Channel 97, and during the council breaks, will be uploaded to YouTube tomorrow. And then we have three individual 90-second spots that'll be going out on social media over the next couple of weeks. They've already been produced, but we don't want to just stack them all one after another. And then we have an additional 18 pieces for Ask Stockton for individual. Part of the mission is to let people know what kind of things that they can report. So some people may know that they can report illegal dumping, but maybe they don't know that a broken sidewalk or an out street light that they can also report through Ask Stockton.
And will you measure the traffic on the different? Because I know sometimes I have to go all the way to the bottom, you know, to get to streets, sidewalks, and gutters, because that's towards the bottom, but those are often, you know, because potholes, right? I've done the potholes too, got to scroll all the way to the bottom. I wish it was in the top.
And we are, we are working with the software provider to see what we can do to maybe streamline that user interface. There's some, some things that we've noticed as well, and we'd like to address.
Good, great. Councilwoman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just admit, I was the one that was very jealous of the county video. Are there gonna be anything in like real time? For example, we have a Christmas tree lighting coming up. Is there gonna be drone footage and video taken? And then, I mean, a lot of this stuff that I saw up here was old. So is there gonna be real-time videos out for people to view?
Yes, so we do have the tree lighting on our calendar. We have a couple of other events coming up that are on the calendar as well. We have three things that we shot last week that are being edited right now, so those will be coming up in the next few days. The, trying to think if there was another part to your question. As far as the drone footage goes, we have a request in for that technology, so as soon as that gets cleared, we do have drone operator.
I had one more question. Blanked. Okay. Thank you. I forgot.
Pleasure.
Councilmember Villapouda.
Yes. Thank you, Tony. Great presentation. You know, I think we seen some things that we haven't seen for a long time, and I just wanted to give you kudos for what you're doing. So my only question is, how often you and your team are out there? I seen that you were there the other day with the vets, and how often you guys going out there and doing videos?
So we go out, it's, as much as we can. It's, you know, internally, we kind of joke, we're like the Ghostbusters. We get a phone call, everybody runs out to shoot video. If we get it on the calendar, we can plan for it, but sometimes we'll get a phone call, say, for some of the shots that you saw with the fire department, they'll call up and say, hey, we're doing an extraction training today, can you guys come out? And we'll run right over, we'll send two people over there to shoot that. We had, we had an issue just the other day where we had two teams at two different locations so that we're not missing these things. Some of it's to shoot what we call B-roll, and that is to have a lot of video, sort of what we call in the can, just ready to go, so when something pops up, we can put it together really quick and get it out. Or maybe all we can do is get one quick shot of something that's happening, and we can, we can fill it in with additional supporting video.
So obviously, you know, our colleagues are always doing different projects, things in their community. So if we're doing a project, is that something that you would do a video and be on the side as well?
So it, again, it would go through the city manager's office as long as, it's sort of the idea is, as long as it's not political. If the City of Stockton is, say, a financial partner, that would be one of the considerations that the city manager would take under consideration. If it's, if it's a personal project of that council member, chances are it would not be covered. It would really be city projects.
So has that been any projects that a council member has requested and city manager has said no?
If they requested straight to the city manager, I wouldn't know.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, the mayor triggered these following comments with the county video because the county video was phenomenal. And I, we've had such a productive meeting today that I, I want to maintain that same vibe, but I do want to be very honest and straightforward. I'm a business person, right? And when I think about why the whole Optic thing was exciting when it was brought conceptually to us at the budget discussions was, the mayor and I had a conversation early on when we first got in office that what we want to do is tell the Stockton story. We want people to fall in love with the idea of building, visiting, and investing in this city. We are paying almost $1 million for this department, and I will leave out the controversial part about the fact that I don't believe it was in our budget that we approved. But what I will say is for what the taxpayers are paying for, I don't know that we've seen a return on that investment yet. I, I think a lot of the content we just saw, which was part of a reel, that's what we would call that, is a reel, was stuff that has been dated from like what we would need to go out tomorrow. So I don't really understand, and maybe if you can help us, how the department is functioning in terms of output. For example, you know, if the mayor, I'll go back to that event we had with the kids, what was that event? The YES program? Okay. Like, in real time, when we have an event like that, within 48 hours, we should have something that tells that story, is kind of what's in my mind. When I think about the county video, what I loved about it was, as we were sitting there, I'm like, what county is that? Because the story that was being told, and it wasn't even about each individual person, it was just about like, in that sector, you mean like, oh, I didn't think about this, or in this sector, I didn't think about that. I mean, that's kind of what I envision Optic doing. What is the plan to, first, I guess the question is, is the plan to get to that? And the second part of that question is, when I look at PD, and chief is in the back, I don't know what their plan is, but they tell their story very well in real time and post-event. So is the plan to get to something like that? Is it, what is the actual plan in terms of output?
There was a lot to that question. Short answer, yes. The plan is to get to that.
Okay. So given that we're in November, and we've been doing this now since May, how do we, how do we speed up the output to actually deliver on that? I mean, I see the timelines here, but, you know, running a media company myself, I understand the difference between a deck and presentation and intention and like execution. It's very, it's very different. How do we get to, I guess, what we're asking for today, or what I'm asking for?
Sure. I, just for clarity, the Optic team didn't get hired until, I want to say, two and a half months ago. So they haven't been here since May. And they've been joining the team in sort of a staggered approach. So once they all got here, then we had to go through getting the technology for them and getting all those things set up. So I wouldn't even say that they're fully tech-ed out, they, with equipment. We're still working on getting the equipment, so as soon as that happens, things will move a little bit more quickly.
What more equipment do we need? I mean, we, we, my understanding from the last presentation where we saw a timeline that was provided by you, it actually outlined, I think it showed that they were in around June, so like we're in November now. So how much more time and what else is needed for them to be, for your department to be able to create the creative output that we need to tell our story? Because part of what we're trying to get to is what the mayor pointed out that triggered me, that county video. That's, I think, the end game of what we're trying to get to. How do we get to that now, and what is the timeline for that?
It happens, let's see, the, it really comes down to the city manager. Whatever the city manager wants to put forward, that's what we will put forward. We operate under his authority, whoever that city manager happens to be. So the messages that come out happen in that process.
Okay, so if Mr. Ford starts tomorrow, which I believe that was the agreement tonight, and he says, within the next 30 days, we want to see, you know, XYZ, your team is capable of doing that?
Absolutely.
In terms of output?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Blower.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm kind of curious, just to follow up too, on some of like how quickly videos are produced and where to find them. I have to admit, I, it makes me an old guy, but I'm mostly a Facebook guy. So are you, where else, or, I mean, as an example, like on, a couple of weeks ago, the Lindsay Point plaque removal, which I think is a real important thing that our city did. I think that made a really good statement that we saw the historical wrong and we righted that wrong. And I saw a snippet in your, what'd you call it, a reel?
Reel.
In your reel. But was there like a video produced about that or specific event? And did I, because I, I go to Facebook and I didn't see it on Facebook. So is that, does that exist now? Is that...
There is one that exists, yes.
So where would I find it?
If it has not been posted, then it would be in the approval process.
So that, that's another... So that, that's another thing I was curious about. So what, what is that process? Because like I said, that was almost two weeks ago. So what, are you looking at ways to kind of streamline it? And who, who has to approve it? Do you run through city manager?
Currently it goes through the city management team.
Okay. I just think that, you know, if we can streamline that process and, you know, the quicker you can post things like that, the more relevant, you know, it would be. But, um, so am I okay just sticking with Facebook or do I have to look and learn some of these other things? Don't make me do the TikTok.
Everything that the, the city puts out, the city puts out on, especially on our Facebook page, but we are adding additional channels. So we are looking, we actually are looking at TikTok. But in addition to that, we're, we're looking at more content. So we are trying to get it out as fast as possible.
Yes, I said the TikTok just to sound extra old.
Councilmember Enriquez.
Thank you, Mayor. I, well, that's really strong. Uh, so I just, I'm looking at your three buckets and I know this is something that when you last presented, I had asked, and I think Councilwoman Padilla, uh, mentioned the, the tree lighting. And I know I've been seeing graphics on Instagram from the city of Stockton about looking for vendors and promoting it. From that last conversation to what she just raised is, I see the three buckets, I see the, the phase rollout, the key campaign launch dates, but also in general, I would think too, and also what Mr. Cruz said about things that are unified where all council members can participate. So, or also the, the traditional events that we already know that's coming. So if we already know there's, let's say, eight signature events, I'm just making that number up throughout in the upcoming year, we map out a timeline and we already know what's expected of us. So if it is a unified video like State of the City or other videos where it's deemed appropriate where all of us have to chime in, or in general to say to Councilmember Blower's point, if there is a video that has been, is being worked on, at what point do we get an email communication saying, hey, you know, it's November 1st, this is what's in the pipeline for the, for the month of November in terms of what council's going to get? You know, expect these two, three videos in alignment with one of these three buckets. You know, if there's two videos coming out in November, great, which of the three buckets does it fulfill? When can we expect it? Where can we find it? Will there be links provided, Facebook, YouTube, et cetera? So, you know, that's the type of, of process I think at least helps me out a little bit. And I think it also helps answer some of the questions that some of my colleagues have raised. Uh, I was also curious to, to know about what Optic does not do. And Councilmember Villa Pudua mentioned this. At what point, uh, did you learn this? Because I remember early on in the year, there was videos of National Night Out and there was a District Four, uh, video that was made. And just for the record, I did not ask Optic to make a video just for me. Not that any of my colleagues are, are saying that, but I say that out loud because, you know, at what point, well, is, is that balanced? So if it's not following individual council members or creating content, the, is it more of you informed all seven of us and just maybe certain ones responded yes earlier on? Was it a lesson learned? And is this why now this is now posted here on this presentation in November?
No, it was understood at the time. And if you remember, we did reach out to each one of the, uh, council member offices to find out where they would be and when. And we tried to coordinate with the individual teams to be everywhere. So, uh, each council member that coordinated with us and, and participated with us was represented in that. It's very similar to a ribbon cutting or groundbreaking where maybe three members of the council show up. So we're able to get all three of them into the shot. That doesn't necessarily exclude the other council members. It was just at that event, those were the ones that showed up. But at an event like that, if three council members showed up and one was excluded, that could be a violation. So we're, we're trying to work within that framework and, and make an, uh, an earnest effort, um, to avoid any sort of kerfuffle.
And, and would you hope to also do some type of monthly recap or heads up to the councils to, you know, to what I said earlier about this is what's in the pipeline?
So during our meetings with the city managers, that was a topic that came up. So we are working on a notification, sort of a end of the week sheet, not necessarily at the end of the week, but a, a regular sheet that you'll get all of the postings, the links to where you can find them, the platforms that they were posted on, just so that council is aware of the messaging that's going out.
Great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Padilla was supposed to be next, but I'll go ahead and jump in. Uh, you know, that Lindsay Point, um, that Councilmember Blower brought up, uh, I think that's timeless. You know, there's still a story to be told there that can be, uh, distributed. And I think when I look at like the pools or summer activities, putting those out before May, uh, Memorial Day, because that's when pools open back up again. But I think having like a collection of all of the videos, you know, that you have that you can actually draw from so that we can have them out sooner. In anticipation. So the Stockton tree lighting, it was in my council comments, but since we've already brought it up, you know, December 6th, the first Saturday, uh, in December. But letting, you know, uh, families know, making sure that they know, come on down, it's a free event. There'll be hot cocoa and candy canes and fake snow. And I don't know where all is going to be there. It was bubbles one year. It looked like snow, but it was bubbles. But we want people to turn out and there's also the lighted boat parade that night. There's, there's a lot of things going on. And I, 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 I was going to say, you know, I'm gonna do a baking contest with everybody up here for like our open house. So if we put out, you know, uh, what everybody baked or bought that was baked. But, but you know, those kind of fun things that show that side. Florence has the most amazing hot apple cider. I ask for it every year. I see the city attorney nodding her head. Yes, because it is, it is, and everybody's welcome to come to that. We want people, we want to engage with the public in another setting other than just where we are right now because we are at a distance from them. So we, we, uh, I'm, I'm just looking forward to seeing more things come out. I don't know what, uh, the city manager, the incoming city manager, I don't know what his desires are, but I'm sure nobody on this council will, um, be quiet about, you know, what their hopes and aspirations are. But I do know ultimately, you know, that's going to fall on that person. Because I think about Connie and what Connie would and wouldn't do. And I love Connie. Connie was very strict though. Extremely strict.
With good reason.
Yeah. So since, uh, Councilwoman Padilla isn't back, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. By the way, I won't be baking anything, but I will be buying everything, um, because I'm not a baker. Just put that out there. Yeah, I mean, again, just looking for more like, uh, meat to this plan. I mean, we don't talk about pickup reports. I feel like as a city, when you're telling your story, you put out press releases, we need to know who's picking it up, what they're saying, what impressions we're getting. It helps us understand our storytelling better. In my company, we have what's called a brand bible. It's sort of like a booklet that says, here's our fonts, here's our colors, here's our videos, this is what it looks like. This is, and I can literally hand it to the mayor or Councilwoman Ponce or whoever, and they can literally know what to do with the entire company. So like, I don't know what that looks like for the city. And then social media growth, like how are we tracking how we're growing? How are we tracking if we're, uh, using proper hashtagging? Like I don't need, I have my own team now for my own content. I don't need any help with that. But in terms of the Stockton story, like how are we making the content, um, visible, shareable, engaging, uh, that is making people, uh, become more attracted to the city? And I don't see that. So, I mean, I guess what I'll do is I'll, I'll put my thoughts together, send to Mr. Ford, send to the mayor, uh, uh, continue to have a conversation on what, what direction I think we should be going in. But I will say that, um, we need measurable, trackable goals. So whatever we're investing in, because to spend almost a million dollars in a department, we have to be able to track the outcomes. And I just think, uh, you know, I would need more information to feel like we're on track with that. But thank you for the presentation.
Okay, I, I would call on Councilwoman Padilla, but she's not here. But we have public comment. So, uh, we'll have you step back and maybe she'll be back before then. Hopefully it wasn't something she ate.
Pat Barrett, please. Pat Barrett resident. I am not a fan of TikTok and all those social medias. This, you know, you get one and then they gotta start sending everybody else, then you gotta follow it and then you got everybody else following stuff and you get all these little notifications. They drive me nuts. So on the presentation, it said GovTV and I went, okay, GovTV, wait, isn't that Xfinity? That's cable, right? Okay. And I go, damn, I just undid my cable. I'm now live TV, okay? With the antenna thing again. And then I went to our Ask Stockton and I went to social media. Web page not available. I'm like, okay, wait. So now I can't go to my Ask Stockton app, but I can't go to GovTV now either. So I'm trying to figure out how my, and then God forbid if I gotta do all the TikTok and Instagram stuff. How am I going to catch up with some of the stuff that's happening in the city of Stockton? Well, we'll figure that one out, right? Just a comment from the public. So the other thing I wanted to address was, now if Councilmember Villa Pudua and Vice Mayor, um, Lee and even Councilmember Padilla or Blower, they all want to sit up there and do an event, you know, whether it's their money or the city's money, I don't know. When it comes to Conway and Sierra Vista, which is some of our underserved communities, I really think it's important, whether somebody's paying for it or God blessed them with a bunch of turkeys, that they're covered, that they're put out there, that our people on the South Side are literally being, um, put out there in our city, that people are not forgotten just because you don't live in a big house. We have to remember these people too. We need to have coverage at the food bank when they're passing out turkeys. I mean, the county, we all gave money to them and we're all doing those giveaways and stuff like that. But that's just as important as the fire department tearing apart a car or the police department, you know? But an animal shelter rescuing a dog. Our folks down on the South Side really need the recognition and the publicity that we do care about them. And Michael Blower serving Western Farm Worker People dinner.
Councilwoman Padilla.
You know, actually, my question was answered. Blower had asked the same, what platforms?
Okay. So I was going to point out YouTube. Don't, do we have a YouTube or?
We do.
We have a YouTube page. And, and then I was thinking about PD and one of the reasons why PD is able to churn so much out, that he has, because he has a, he has seven people, I think. You know, he has his two PIOs, he has two people that do the tech stuff, he's got Nicolette, Michelle, and then there's a third person. But they go to Sierra Vista, they go to Conway Homes. Wherever they go, he's got his team with him and they're, they're churning stuff out. So we just need to make sure that we, uh, follow them and, and share out that stuff as well.
And there's only three people on the Optic team. It's, uh, we, we get a lot, uh, ground covered with those three people.
Was there any more public comment?
No, there are not.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So you have three people or there's five people on the team?
No, the Optic team has three people. Then you have the PIO and then you have the PEG engineer.
Okay. So understanding that the PD has a greater team, um, you know, I think about like, for example, when you talk about the South Side, like right now I have my team that I'm paying to cover all of my content because I need to control my district's output. But if somebody else was in this seat, um, they wouldn't be able to do that because they don't have the resources that I do. But what I will say again, like trackable, engaging, sharing content, like the vision, I still, I still don't have that. But again, I will put my ideas together to help us hopefully get there. Because for, we're now going into Christmas, so to the mayor's point, if we have the tree lighting and all that, from that point on, we need to be like fully into storytelling and not wait until like April of 2026. So, uh, yeah, I mean, when Mr. Ford comes in, hopefully he can help us, uh, see what that vision looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Moving on to item 16.4, approve a resolution supporting the application of ServiceFirst Northern California Inc. for the Local Government Matching Grants Program for Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program Round One for the ServiceFirst of Northern California Recovery Center located at 1,005 North Eldorado Street, Stockton, California. So, uh, I did, uh, put this item on. It was after our discussion that we had, uh, last Wednesday. And try as we must not to discuss it at that point. It seemed like a collective from the council that we could, um, bring it back, uh, for a discussion. I know in the, uh, staff report, there were renderings, uh, for this. And I wanted to share some of the information that I, I gotta find it now. I haven't memorized, I think. So we're talking about over a three-year period, two cents, two cents per person with 18,720 people that are served, uh, that are served for like outpatient services. It's 900, a little more than $900 per bed over a three-year period. And I'm not talking a week, I'm not talking a month, I'm talking about the whole year for the 108, eight beds. And I, I, as I look at this, I think that, you know, we've given to Stockton Shelter for the Homeless for the Navigation Center, we've given to Pathways. We're looking at all of the, uh, beds that we need in our community in order to serve the population that we have. I know some of the concern had to do with the fact that, um, uh, are we supporting? Are we not supporting? This was a round one and I, I don't know, um, if I, Burnell, do you mind coming up to the podium? I don't know how many projects were actually funded in our area. I know Bewell was, was funded in our area, but I didn't know any other than yours for round one in our area.
Yes, there was only two ServiceFirst in, uh, in San Joaquin County.
Okay. Can you share with council, um, how it's going to work? Because I, I think you guys can bill for Medi-Cal, uh, uh, on this, but how would it work? How would somebody get into your, your program? And what are the programs? Respite, social rehabilitation? You know, what are all the facets of the program in the proposal that you presented to the state that I know we gave to Alex? It, it got sent to her and, did I send it to you too? So.
Well, uh, ServiceFirst is Medi-Cal certified, uh, in two locations right now in San Joaquin County, in Stockton, actually. We have a location on Hammer and we have a location on Acacia and Center Street. The, the Eden Hotel will need to be certified. We don't, we don't see that that's going to be a problem because we already have two certifications. So with that, we will be able to, um, bill Medi-Cal for our services that we provide. We are looking at a small amount of rent, uh, for people that can afford it. We expect to get referrals from a BHS, from the court system, um, from human services, Superior Court, uh, we'll probably get referrals from, uh, from them also. We expect, what we are looking at is we expect to be able to provide housing for a minimum of three months to a year or whatever it takes in order to get a person, uh, stable. The concept that we are working off is called Housing First. And so, uh, we, we were committed to, uh, providing the housing and then bringing in, bringing in treatment as needed. We can't force treatment on, on anyone that, uh, we are, we allow to live there. But the goal would be to, uh, bring them in, stabilize them, bring in treatment services. Now ServiceFirst, uh, we have been doing, uh, treatment, uh, drug treatment, uh, DUI education, uh, for over 20 years. And so we have that background with working with that population. We also, um, have, um, a fair amount of experience working with mental health clients. Most people that we deal with are dual diagnosed. They either have, they have, uh, substance abuse problem and mental health, uh, issues. And so we, we have that experience. In the, the state, we would only, like I said, uh, BHS, um, got a million, 137 million and we got eight million. That eight million would give us the ability to buy the building and then to go back in and rehab the building. And we want to set it up where people that are living there can... And we want to set it up where people that are living there can, well, we have, that hotel has a kitchen, and so, we'll be able to provide food. But we are setting it up where when we do the rehab, we'll have two large group rooms for sessions. And then we'll have at least three smaller rooms that we'll be able to do individual counseling at the facility. And we expect to be able to put in a activity location at the hotel. We'll probably have pool table, a pool table, pinball, yeah, pinball machine, and table tennis. Just something that, when the people are there, it'll be a community they can come in. They don't necessarily have to leave every day. They'll be able to have events going on at the facility. The, you know, we don't, we don't see that there's going to be a problem with filling it up. And, you know, because the need is there. I mean, at any night in San Joaquin County, there's over 4,000 people that are unhoused. And so, we have a relationship with BHS. BHS has agreed to give us technical support when we are setting up, making sure, helping us to get our Medi-Cal certification. And we expect them to be involved with the counseling as we go forward. So, it's going to be a process. But we expect to be able to have it up and running once we get the funding and the state is not releasing any funds until February or March of next year. And then within eight months, eight to nine months, that will be our rehab period. We'll have it ready to go, so...
What, when did you say it would be up and ready to go?
I would imagine eight, after we, in February or March, we'll get funding from the state. And it'll probably take us eight to nine months to do the rehab. Now, our intention is, is we have four buildings. So, we'll do one building, and then we'll open up housing, and then we'll move to the next building. So, yeah, we don't expect, so, we don't want to wait to provide the housing. So, as soon as we are able to start building, you know, and once we complete one of the buildings, we'll open it up to the public.
Okay, Councilwoman Padilla?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment and thank you what, thank you for what you do for our community. I'm privy to a lot of different families that aren't in need. And I reached out to Mr. Hill, and he was trying to help with low-income housing. And I will tell you, his low-income housing was about $700 for a two-bedroom, which, you know, typically is unheard of. And so, and I strongly believe that this is the type of housing and resources that we need here in Stockton. My two questions circled around budget, and I see we got a round-the-bench memo that if, if we do commit, that our funds would be coming from an opioid settlement that the city has received. Also, and I'm just going to put it out there because it is public knowledge that we were under the anticipation that the county was going to also contribute, however, they chose not to. So, if you don't have the funds, the project won't proceed. So, to make up that difference, what is your plan?
I have to say, I was very disappointed with the county. But, you know, we had an A and B plan all the time, and we will close that gap. We reached out to two of the banks that we work with. And we, it might, it's going to be a little tight. But if we had to, we'll self-fund the money, the other. We don't have 800,000. We need the 300 from the city. We needed the 300 from the county, but we didn't get it. But we are in a position to self-fund if, once we get the 300 from the city.
Thank you for answering that. And I do appreciate the effort that you are putting into this because there are a lot of times that we see projects, and they may be reliant strictly on grant funds. And they don't go out and do the work that you do and try to get their own funding as well. So, that tells us how indebted you are in this project. Just typically, just like a house. If I put zero down, it's easier for me to walk away. But if I actually put a good amount of deposit, I'm going to do whatever I can to keep that, to keep that home. So, I just wanted to recognize that and thank you for what you do.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Hill, thank you for coming tonight to have this discussion. The first thing I want to do is acknowledge what I've learned about all the amazing work that you've done in providing low-income housing or affordable housing to our community. Because I share the same desire as the mayor and the rest of the council and the community to make sure that we have enough housing opportunities for our community because we know some of the challenges. I want to make one disclosure and one acknowledgement first. One disclosure, an organization that I am affiliated with that the council is aware has applied for the same grant, but not the same round, round two, not round one, so there's no conflict. The second thing is, I'll just make a statement for the record that if there are any conflicts up here, folks should self-disclose, and I'll move on. So, I don't want to get necessarily into all the other details. I think my colleague just brought up the county part, and we know the 10% match is around 800 and something thousand dollars. What money, I have several questions, but let me start with, what money do you have now that would go towards the match if it's 824,000? What percentage of that do you have now?
Well, we've already spent 72,000 on this project. And we have the ability to put in the balance that's left, once we get the 300,000 from the city. And I, you know, like I said, this is a public forum. We have the ability to raise the, and I would imagine we're looking at around 500,000. We have the ability to raise that amount of money.
So, are, do you, are you presenting to us today that the only ability for you to execute on this opportunity would be with the city's support? Meaning, without the city's support, you won't be able to get the rest of the funding?
It's going to be hard.
Okay.
Yeah, we need the city's support.
So, let me ask these questions in terms of modalities, because this is not a low-income housing project, this is not a housing project, it's a project that requires treatment. What treatment options and, like, what modalities is this project going to offer? Because the one thing I will say, just to be consistent as a council, when the last conversation about B-CHIP funding came up, the comments from my colleagues were, "It's rushed, it's rushed, we don't have enough information." And tonight, we're considering giving funds for a project that we're feeling, I'm feeling the same pressure that Councilwoman Padilla voiced. So, what modalities will this project offer in terms of treatment options?
Well, just like I said, what we have done in the last 20 years, we, 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 have you ever heard of Prop 36?
Yeah, and I'm familiar with the drug court work that you do.
And so, that's one modality. We have, we have counselors that are certified, substance abuse counselors. We have counselors that are DUI counselors on staff right now. The other piece that we'll bring to the table is the mental health piece, where we'll have, we expect BHS to do some counseling at our facility.
But if specific modalities besides the DUI or drug court referrals, are there any other defined modalities under the Prop 1 program that you're going to?
Well, peer, peer counseling is another one. And we have, peer counseling normally happens when you have a person, like in the case, may have, a person may have been a drug user, gotten clean, and now they can counsel and do peer counseling for people that are trying to get clean. B-CHIP only asks for mental health, substance abuse, peer counseling. Those are the, and those are the areas that we plan to concentrate our efforts in.
Who will your treatment operator be?
Who would our treatment operator, Service First will be our operator. I mean, we are, you know, we are certified to do all of this. So, we have staff on, we have staff that are doing it right now and have been doing it for the last 20 years, so...
Okay, but in, but in terms of any other partner, there's no other treatment operator to help with the services outside of drug court or DUI that you'd be?
Well, we expect that BHS will be with us on the project. Even though BHS is putting a facility in French Camp, we think that we need to have a facility in Stockton. And we'll be able to offer 92 beds, 92 rooms. The state, BHS, I mean, the B-CHIP funding is really a treatment fund, for funding. And we are able to do treatment and provide housing at the same time, and so...
For the Eden project, is there Medi-Cal reimbursement contract in place? Or is that something that you're hoping to get with the county?
Well, when, when, when the state gave us the award, they knew that what, the next step for us is, once we get control and ownership of the building, then we will go to the state Medi-Cal and apply for the certification. We already have two certifications and buildings that are, that are certified or in the process of being certified. So, we will be able to certify this building, and we should be able to build Medi-Cal. We expect to build Medi-Cal.
But as of right now, there's no, there's no Medi-Cal reimbursement contract for this project?
And that's, that was, that's the way it's been set up. When, if you go into round two and you have a building, the state is going to give you time enough to certify that building so you can build Medi-Cal. That's in the program, that's already set up. They didn't expect us to have our Medi-Cal. Well, we can't have your Medi-Cal if you don't have the building. You have to have the building in order to get Medi-Cal certification for the building, so...
Okay, I have one question for staff. I think Councilwoman Padilla made a mention of this. So, the opioid funding, that's where this money is coming from?
Yes.
Okay, and so, what is the current amount of opioid money that, dollars that we have? And why haven't we used it before tonight?
We have, we have a lot of it committed as of right now. And we're still getting funding in. So, it's, I don't have a dollar amount for you to tell you exactly how much we have. I can, we can get that, but...
I mean, we're considering giving money tonight.
Yes, we had, we knew we had this amount available based on the contracts that we're doing right now.
So, I know we've had extensive conversations about understanding where all the money is. And then tonight, we're finding 300,000 dollars. So, I guess my question would be, was the money committed to other projects? And if so, are we de-obligating money that we're set for other projects or no?
No, we have, we have a new, lack of a better term, vendor that we're working with that is now committed more money. And we're getting more money constantly on this program. So, we're looking for places to commit money to, but that is recent.
Okay.
And I wanted to answer your question because it's actually in the letter. It says acceptable documentation. It's not like we're writing a check tomorrow or next week or even next month. It says acceptable documentation may include a letter dated and signed by the current authorizing Stockton City Manager. So, it would probably, unless you signed it tonight, come tomorrow, it would have to go through Mr. Ford. It says, "Bank statements or other acceptable evidence of cash match source which are subject to DHCS sole discretion and approval." So, that's why it can be more than one entity putting in the money, which is why it's asking for, like, bank statements on that. But money won't come if they don't have the full amount, which is no longer 823,000, it's a lesser number. It's 749,486, I think, or somewhere around that number, according to the letter that I'm reading. But if they don't, if they don't have them, the full match that needs to be for the project, then my understanding is the project wouldn't happen then.
Right.
Well, let me just say this, we're going to have a council discussion at some point when he's done talking, correct? Because, or do you want to have it now?
No, 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 I, well, because I put this agenda item on.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be able to answer a question on it.
I mean, I asked all the questions that I have for this part of it, I guess, from you. Again, being very clear on a couple of things, I mean, reiterating my understanding from my colleague, Councilwoman Padilla, that the county did not move forward today. Did they give you a reason why? Because I haven't watched the meeting of why they didn't approve the funding.
I was told in the meeting, one of the supervisors had an issue about fairness, which I believe it negates itself because there was only two awardees. Evidently, when some of the other entities that were interested in this program, they were told by the BHS director that they would not be able to get funding from BHS. And so, we, we lost the vote, it was a 3-2 vote. We needed four or five in order to get the funding. So, we had the majority of the supervisors, we just didn't have enough. But the issue of fairness came up, and we weren't able to convince two of the supervisors, you know, that that was really not a fairness issue. I mean, there was only two of us that got awarded. So, if there was a third awardee, then you would have a fairness issue if we went up and asked for money and they didn't give that other awardee. But the other awardee, in this case, was a county. And so, but once, you know, we, we just weren't able to convince them that, that there was not an issue with fairness. Both the supervisors are outside of Stockton. One is in Lodi, and the other one's in Tracy. I mean, so, I don't know what that actually means, but it means a little bit to me. So, I'm in Stockton, I want to be able to provide this facility so people in Stockton will be able to have a place to go and don't have to go all the way to French Camp to get services. That's how we look at it, so...
I'll reserve the rest of my comments for a council discussion.
Councilmember Blower?
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at this agenda item, I, and this is a question isn't necessarily for you, I just don't feel like there's a whole lot of information, and I'm curious as to why. I mean, I'm used to having like a staff report, having a lot of information, having them vetting the project. I mean, all I have here are some nice pictures, I got renderings and the letter, and there's a proposed resolution, but not a whole lot of, like, meat to this thing. And the one thing that strikes me with this letter is the, looking through, this was originally approved, or at least the conditional approval back in May. So, how come it took six months to get to us? Why, why didn't we hear this? Why isn't... Why isn't, can, can you just tell me, why didn't staff like do a, do something on this? Why, why don't we have more information? Why didn't staff do like a, their normal staff report?
If, if I can.
So I did, oh, I was gonna say, I did the staff report, so you can blame me for that because it had to get on the agenda. So I came in right away the next day and, uh, identified funding, and then we found a different funding pot. And so I was trying, I took what I had and I put it in there. Um, but staff is, you know, usually a two-week lead time on putting something on the agenda, but this is time sensitive.
Well, and that, that's my question is you had a, it seems like there was a six-month lead time. So why, like, why back in summer didn't this come to us? Or why didn't staff look at it and the, I, I'm just curious about that.
I don't know, I don't know if staff, when staff had it, and I don't know the discussions that, that were had. I don't have the details on that. Vernell, and I, I don't think.
You know, uh, for me, this is not a political issue. Uh, this is an issue of providing services. But, uh, we felt that the match piece was handled and, uh, and then it wasn't. And so when it wasn't, we came, uh, came back and said, you know, we got the letter from the state saying that if we don't fix the, uh, what we thought, the match, the, the piece that was done, uh, that, uh, you know, uh, the letter said that they would pull the funding. So, so like I said, uh, you know, it's, this is a service issue for me. This is us providing something. And I, I, you know, I, that, this came up in the, the meeting with the Board of Supervisors. We went to the state of California, we put in an application and they gave us eight million dollars, or they've committed eight million dollars. That says something. You don't go to the state of California, you don't get eight million dollars if you don't have, uh, what they are looking for. And I'm sorry, you don't have it in front of you right now, but we got an eight million dollar award because our application was good enough to the state and they awarded, awarded us eight million dollars. And that says something, that says a lot to me. You don't get eight million dollars from the state if you don't have your, if you aren't together. If you don't have what they are looking for in order for them to award that kind of money.
And Vernell, I'm not questioning you. I think your organization is great and I think that's, you know, wonderful that you went for that money and that you got that awarded. My questions are more just for like the city side, like what happened on the city side? Like why?
The letter, the letter, um, was dated November seventh, so we didn't get that letter. Uh, I didn't, I, I didn't see that letter till, I think Councilman Padilla got it from the state. So, uh, there was a deadline on the letter, um, that's, that.
But I'm just asking, like, back in the summer, back in May, when, uh, interim city, the manager Clangelo sent the letter saying, like, was there a plan to get that eight hundred thousand at the time? I, I, I'm just curious about that, like, why we didn't get the ball rolling to kinda address that back then?
Cause it was a letter of support, but, uh, uh, it was a letter of support and it wasn't an issue till it became an issue, which is what we talked about. Um, so it became an issue and then bringing it back because of the time-sensitive nature of it, so.
Okay.
I'm, I'm.
I still don't.
Can I, I'm, wait.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, okay, thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Blower. Okay, so here's the deal. I like to see things get done that help our community, but I'm also a guy that follows the rules and I try to be consistent as much as the Lord allows me to. I, first of all, I wanna say that getting awarded eight million dollars from the state is not an easy thing. So first I wanna commend all the work that you and your team did because I do know how difficult this application process is. To my colleague's question, let's just put it out there, right? The reason why this didn't come before council before is because the interim city manager sent a letter to the state committing ten percent match, which he wasn't authorized by this council to do. So what's, what we're trying to do now is right a wrong and put this on track so we can help provide opportunity for our community, so that's one. Um, I'm not gonna politicize, I'm gonna be better than that, than politicize this opportunity because I can go on and on and on about the hypocrisy that I'm hearing in this room tonight because when the other B-CHIP opportunity came, that was actually to bring money to the community without actually having to find money to put towards helping rehabilitate a building to serve our kids, so there's that. Uh, what I will say is, I'm, uh, here's my concern. My concern is less about the politics, less about the fact that that letter's been referred, less about the interim city manager, he's gone, all that's gone. My concern is we just went through a whole NOFA process where we talked to our community about a process of being fair. We made our staff go through lots and lots of work of presenting processes to be able to provide fair and equitable opportunity. Um, and so my question to the council is, are we considering us now double speaking and saying we intentionally want a process that we're now gonna change? The other thing is, this conversation happens to be for this, a similar grant from a similar entity where this council had a completely different position on with not having enough time to prepare, feeling rushed, um, competitive opportunity for the rest of the community, and we're literally getting ready to do this, do something that we did not do the first time. So the hypocrisy is just, it's just very, very loud and people are watching, so I want us to consider that. Um, and then the last thing is, um, and just more importantly, is being very clear on when we make a decision like this, we have to then make that the standard for everything to follow. Meaning if Carol Nellis walks in the room and says, "I have confirmed funding of eight million dollars, ninety-three hundred thousand," we're gonna be scrambling in a week to find that money for her. And then what does that do in terms of other people in our community that are relying on the taxpayer resources or grant resources that we have to provide fair and equitable access to support? So mine is less about politicizing it because, Vernell, I will say, like, for you to even get this far is huge. And I want people to understand that, it is not an easy application process. The rendering where you talk about a photo, you have to hire an architect, you have to spend money to have an architect build out this design, and there does have to be a lot of thought into it. But I will say that, um, the county denying the funding, um, regardless of the verb, the, the details of why they said it, um, fairness, from what I'm hearing from Mr. Hill, is, is similar to what I'm raising here. So again, I'm one of seven votes. But I just want whatever decisions we make to be consistent and the standard not, uh, be applicable to a person, but just more of a process.
Okay, uh, so a, a couple of things, um, I know, I know, okay, we have public comment. Go ahead, let's go with the public comment.
Julie Dunning, please. Okay, well, a lot was explained tonight, but I'm gonna do my comments as I'd written them because prior to a few minutes ago, there was no information about this project. While I'm excited to see the opportunity for approximately a hundred new beds and treatment services in Stockton, there's some concerns I have regarding the project. First, the public has never been given a clear explanation of what the project entails other than it's a substance use disorder treatment facility. No staff presentation has ever been given. The B-CHIP application has never been disclosed, so we don't know if the eight million dollars plus in grant dollars plus the ten percent match, which according to the November seventh letter is still eight hundred thousand twenty-three, is to purchase or lease the existing Eldorado Hotel formerly known as the Eden Hotel for this project. And it makes a difference whether it's a purchase or a lease. Either way, this is a thirty-year project. Since two thousand and fifteen, this hotel has been privately owned by a for-profit entity and has been renovated and restored for the past ten years. I have receipts for what they've been doing. The owner-manager of the hotel claims to work for local real estate investment attorneys and rooms are currently being rented out as low-income housing. So it's questionable whether or not we are truly gaining beds, although we definitely will be gaining services. In the data provided by Councilmember Padilla last week, it states that Mr. Hill has approximately one hundred and forty-four thousand of sunk costs in the project. I'd like to know what those costs represent as he doesn't currently own the facility and the owner claims to have done all the renovations themselves. There's a definition in the B-CHIP application of what sunk cost is. Another concern is that over the last five years, the city has already obligated three million plus on another project for Mr. Hill that is still pending. A review of the Home Key Plus Grant Awards as of October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five indicates that Mr. Hill has not been awarded the thirty-six million gap funding grant needed to move that project forward. While there are provisions in place to de-obligate the three million if that project fails to materialize, I'm not saying, seeing the same for the three hundred thousand you're proposing to obligate on this project. In a city where almost six months into the fiscal year, we don't have a reconciled or published budget, nor a CFO, nor contracts for our officers, and we are only a tax measure away from facing insolvency again, three hundred thousand matters. Thank you.
Pat Barrett.
Pat Barrett, resident. So on Vice Mayor Lee's, um, comment, we sat here a month ago and because of the word Hollywood was brought up to a B-CHIP of fifty-eight million dollars that would have done great for the team center, it was denied. And that was because, well, how come it wasn't put out for competitiveness? And why wasn't it done this? And why didn't we hear about that? And again, here we are, what, a month and, month, five weeks later, with the same situation with the different name on it. Um, I understand, again, the friendship is there. The bottom line is this, if we're gonna do for one, we gotta do for all. And if we can't do for one, we can't do for all. And this is where, when I talked earlier about our new, uh, city manager, which I'm glad we have, ethics is, is very important. When we cross the threshold at this building, we put on our professional hats to wear, uh, we have to be fair to everybody in the city. I personally tried to get that building before COVID. That woman said the city of Stockton wants to tax it as a hotel and not as residential, so they just couldn't afford it. The low income was just below their social security check, literally. So if it was like, you know, nine hundred dollars, the rent was eight something. And people just can't live off of that. So Plan B, if we could find a way, um, to inhabit this building, we can still do services. Me, as a certified substance abuse, uh, counselor and a mental health counselor, I am not an LMFT or LCSW. I cannot do my billing per se, I have to have a licensed therapist bill. If you don't have a contract with BHS as a, uh, termed-out chair for their advisory board, um, if you don't have a contract with them, you don't get to do, they won't do your, you don't get to do the billing with them. You have to have your own MPI, I have an MPI, I can do billing. Um, as a peer support specialist supervisor, I can do the billing. Bottom line is, you can't go on, I tell my kids this all the time, you can't count your chickens before they're hatched. Where are the letters from the banks for the support? I'm sad, you know, um, I know one of my county supervisors said, "God, a hundred beds would be great." But if, if the, if, if they're not fitting right, something's not right. And when you're rushing it, we're rushing it. And when you're seeing what's going on again, we can't do it. I would love to have this place for housing. I've been trying to get it when Tom Patty was county supervisor, but she just wouldn't budge. And so I wanna know how that could work if we didn't get this through.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, so there was a lot in that. It's not a NOFA project, uh, because that's when we do pass-through funds. This was a state grant, a B-CHIP round-one grant. It's not six million, uh, match, it's, it's three hundred thousand. If you've been through the building, there's ninety doors, there's ninety rooms, uh, that are, you know, with a bathroom and all that kinda thing, and then there's a two-bedroom, two, two-bedroom, uh, units there. Um, if you walk through it, um, surely, uh, I love you, but it still needs a lot of work to get to the point where you can have people that occupy it. So there's gonna take some time to get it to the place where it is viable for people living there. It is not fully occupied. It is not even close to being fully occupied. There might be two or three cars there, there are people that come and go from there. Um, I, I've been there, so, uh, and, and it has, it has been vacant for many years. There are people there now, uh, but it has been, it has been vacant. And, um, i- it got put on the market for sale. It was put on the market for sale. As far as the, um, uh, funding, it's opioid settlement dollars. Opioid settlement dollars can only go to specific things and our city attorney can, uh, probably expand on that. But it can't just, uh, uh, it's not just like general fund dollars, which is what I was, uh, identifying or looking for, was those general fund dollars that came from the chemical settlement that we have from like 3M giving money, DuPont, different companies, that, uh, that money went into our general fund. But it's individual rooms with, with restrooms in them, which I know some people don't wanna be at, at a shelter because there isn't much privacy there. But the thing that I always come back to is, is I hear from, uh, Pat, "We don't know where they are 'cause you keep moving them." Well, you would know where they are in this building that, that could use some TLC and love, uh, for people, to give them TLC and love. And so, uh, uh, if, if it's the pleasure of the council, we don't need a supermajority. The, the, uh, Board of Supervisors require a supermajority. If it was just a simple majority, uh, it would have, it would have passed. And yes, there isn't, uh, uh, all the information in there because it, we, we had this, well, it was written on November seventh, so we didn't know necessarily what, uh, the issue was other than they thought the whole entire cash match was, uh, coming from, uh, the city of, of Stockton. So, um, three hundred thousand for ninety, ninety doors, I think, is, is, is great. That's just me, though. So, uh, I've got other council members flashing their lights, so Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, I have a question for Vernell. I know that you, um, recently received a letter from the state. Did they give you a timeline, um, in which you need to be able to confirm the full ten percent match in order for this, um, award to be, uh, legit?
So twenty-first.
Of?
November.
Okay, so today is the eighteenth. So in three days, if you are given the three hundred thousand today, which would be contingent, there would definitely have to be so many contingencies. And by the way, for the record, because the record does stay forever, pause, Vernell, to council, this is extremely hypocritical from what you all just did less, less than a month ago. So ethical governance is as critical as creative thinking. And the public watching, you need to know that when you elect people, they need to be consistent because this game that's being played is so bad because we've already applied for round two and we're gonna figure out how to help serve the community because that's what this should all be about. And the reason why I haven't over-politicized my comments to you, Mr. Hill, is because I know how hard it is to do what you're doing and so I'm trying to figure it out here. So you have three days, if you're given the three hundred thousand dollars, do you believe in seventy-two hours you're gonna be able to figure out the five hundred something plus thousand?
Yes.
Okay, and so, let me ask the mayor a question or the, the city attorney or whoever wants to answer this. When it comes to opioid money, because I wasn't around when we were granted that money or how that money was given to us as a city, how did we use that in the past? Or how did we, how did the community access these resources? I guess, can someone?